I call this committee the whole meeting to order. Let me remind people, this is an interactive part of our meetings. We have participation from the audience. I would ask that you keep the public display of support to a minimum because I know that there are opposing views in the audience and probably on council. So, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Councilor Corlick, councillor Thompson, all those in favor. Don't need a second or. We have minutes from July 15th. Motion to accept the minutes of July 15th. Councillor Kroc, Studley, all those in favor. Wasting time with a second or. All right. Petitions and delegations. The first item on the agenda is the warming center. And I would invite whoever's stepping forward on that matter to approach the microphone and identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. I'm Kim Gordon. I'm the coordinator for the warming center.
We're going to give you a mic there. There you go.
Can I just go ahead and read my letter?
Yeah.
I've read many comments on Facebook that talk about what goes on at the warming center. Most of you have never come to the warming center to see for yourself. Most of what I read was untrue. Postings come from our city councillors. You talk about the lack of rules, that no one does chores or helps out. You talk about the sweet deal the guests at the warming center receive. You talk about the bike chop shop in the back. You make fun of them, you laugh at them, you belittle them, you call them things like shit rats and bottom Peters. You are bothered that you drive by and you see them playing frisbee. Let me say those comments are of a bully. I think most of you would agree. This is bullies and bystanders at their best. I would like to share with you what goes on at the warming center. We do have rules at the warming center. Every day myself and staff deals with situations that come up and when someone breaks a rule, they are spoken to. The first and most important rule is respect. Respect for staff, respect for each other. We ask guests not to use alcohol or drugs at the warming center. We have chores that guests do. We do not post rules on the wall. We deal with issues as they come up. We do not have a bike chop shop. The police have checked all the bikes at the center. None of them are stolen. Respect is the most important rule we have. There is no tolerance for disrespecting staff. I've asked people to leave for being disrespectful. We ask people not to use drugs or alcohol. If we find out they are using or drinking, we give them the opportunity to change their behavior. If they don't make those changes, we ask them to leave. Guests do chores, everything from washing dishes to cleaning bathrooms. The outside of the warming center is kept neat and tidy by the guests as well as staff. We do not have a safe injection site at the warming center. I encourage all of councillors to seek education on the program's interior health offers. Adrian Yasi died of an overdose a block away from the warming center. My heart truly goes out to his family. Adrian chose to leave the warming center alone and I can't help but wonder if he was to have stayed at the warming center, would his life have been saved? Training for staff is ongoing. We have taken courses on trauma, de-escalation, first aid, and the lock zone. We continue to seek further education to help us do our job more effectively. We have 13 dedicated employees from this community at the warming center. We work in teams and for the past eight months, we have come together to help the warming center be a place people can come, find acceptance without judgment, a place to rest and feel safe. There is an ongoing opioid crisis in our country and in our city. It's not going away and we need to reach out to the people in our community with empathy and love. I have had many community members come to me and thank me for taking care of their loved ones. I have had people tell me their son or their daughter hasn't looked as good in a long time. They thank me, give me a hug, and walk away with just a little peace in their heart because they know their loved ones has people in his or her life that genuinely care about them. Staff helps guests by seeking services in our community that provide the information the guests need to start getting their income tax, birth certificate, social insurance, and social assistance, and anything else that will help and encourage them to continue on a path to living and hopefully one day recovery. I ask you this, if closing the warming center is your only option, where can these people go that will be okay with you? Where can they find acceptance, love, in a place where they feel safe and cared for? Where can these community members live so their families don't live in constant fear that their grandchild, their mother, friend, or their child's safety? We are asking you to rescind your bylaws. We are asking you to help the warming center to continue to provide these services for the members in our community that have fallen on hard times. I would close with two thoughts. I challenge any one of you to come to the warming center for a visit or spend the night. Living communally in a small place with 900 people, I can assure you it's not for ritz. Finally, Webster's dictionary, the definition for bully is "a person who uses strength or influences to harm or intimidate those who are weaker." Please ask yourself if that's who you are. Thank you. I have a letter here from one of the guests that's staying at the warming center. She says, "I'm writing to you as I am experiencing overwhelming sense of powerlessness. A threat to my personal well-being is making me feel lost, alone, and vulnerable. A threat to my physical well-being, my mental health, as well as my safety. My life is being put in harms way by the decision Grand Forks City Councilor has made to evict the guests from the warming center after allowing us to reside here for the past seven months. I deserve the same rights as any other Canadian citizen. I am Canadian. I am 50 years of age. I have nowhere else to go. By enforcing this eviction notice, you will be putting me out on the street. Are you punishing me for falling on hard times, for not having a home? So you choose to throw me to the curb like you do your trash? I refuse to allow the councillors of Grand Forks to dictate life-changing decisions without speaking up. It is not my choice to live communally. It's circumstances beyond my control that has led me here. However, I am very thankful for the warming center and the services provided to me. Taking the warming center away will only cause myself and other guests pain, suffering, fear, and a sense of helplessness. You are violating my civil rights, human rights, and putting our lives in danger. Thank you." I did bring some guests with me from the warming center that wanted to stand up with me. The room was full, so they weren't allowed, so they're standing up in the hallway.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Amanda is in here. Can she read her letter?
It's short.
It's short.
Hi, my name is Amanda Laval. I'm currently living at the warming center. Kim asked me the other day what my plan was when the center closes, where I'm going to live. My response to that is I have nowhere to go. I told Kim I don't know what is going to happen to me. I have lived in this community since I was young. I went to school here. I have some family living here. The warming center is my home. The people at the warming center are my family and friends. The staff is so supportive and encouraging and work hard at making the center a clean, friendly, and safe place for the people that stay there. I am here today to ask you not to close down the place I call home. I am asking you to reconsider your decision to close the warming center and lock us out of our home. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. Your hearing and seeing will help you make the right decision and keep the warming center open. Thank you."
Is there somebody else? Is anybody else in there? No, I don't think so.
I'm the chairman of the Whispers of Hope, taking care of the warming center.
Identify yourself, Dwayne.
Dwayne Foster. I just wanted to say a few words. I just want to ask you people if there's -- you're supposed to be the smartest people in this town. I voted for Samania, most of you. And all I see is hatred. Hatred, hatred, and hatred. And when there's hatred, there is no love. There is no love in your heart and it don't matter whether it's a business decision or not. There is no love. And when there's no love, all it fills up with is hatred. How disgusting things that are said on Facebook by councillors is beyond me. And you call yourselves smart people. And I think you are smart people, but at the same time, you're acting in a very foolish and sad way. I just would like to see that you take the time to think about this because every morning this winter, when you wake up and you make this decision not to allow the warming center to stay, think about how many or how -- if there is one person that may have died because of your situation of voting against this. It is -- our whole constitution is based on life, based on living and having compassion, understanding, caring. And what are you guys doing? Not one bloody thing to help Indigenous people. People that are low in their income, have hardly anything for themselves. And if we move them out of there, there's other places that they're going to go. And then, of course, there's going to be more people that are upset. Why do we need to have everybody upset? That property up there is seven-eighths, at least seven-eighths, surrounded by no people living. It is one of the best places that you're going to ever find. And you've listened to Pam and to Amanda and to the other letter that Pam or Kim wrote. They're all the same. They don't want to come here because they feel like they're being bullied. Bullied on Facebook, bullied on everywhere. As soon as somebody talks about the warming center, it's all ugly. And who are we teaching? We're teaching our kids to be haters. And they're looking at you guys as leaders. And you aren't leaders, you are haters. Now, please, look at this situation a little bit more understanding. Have a little compassion in your heart, all of you. Stand up and recount it. Some of you have taken 15 years to get on council and why? Don't you stand up and recount it instead of, "Oh, no, we just got to go with our bylaws." If you're going to go with the bylaws, then why did you allow Canfest to have all kinds of bylaws changed so that they could operate? What is this? Is it just for the rich? What about the poor? Can't we take care of them? I've been there before and without help, I would not be here today. And I own a $650,000 house. I own shop. I owned my gold mining equipment and that was all taken from me from one little accident. WCB would not even help me and I lost everything. So tell me, just tell me why you can sit in this chair and say that your councillors, it's unbecoming a councillor to sit here and do what you do and run people down on Facebook and everywhere else. And yes, you can smile, but it's not funny. It is hurting us, it's hurting our community. If you think that it's not hurting our community, you've got another thought coming. This is the most important society we have in Grand Forks, is the Whispers of Hope, because they are doing things that help people. You are doing things that kill people. I'm sorry, I just get a little too carried away. But I'm just saying, what has to happen is think about this. Give it another eight months. You've given it eight months so far. Give it another winter, see what happens. Let us work together to make something happen. Let us not fight. People are getting things destroyed because they're standing up for people that need help. Think about it. When you make that decision, don't enforce the bylaw, please. Do the smart thing. Let them stay there. And we will prove to you that they are valuable in this society. They have done a lot for individuals. But no, we keep on putting crap on Facebook that is lies. And they're lies because I have seen one, "Oh yeah, the mayor and I was going out driving around looking for a place." We never did such a thing. Why the lies? It's nothing but lies and then you guys are making decisions based on lies.
I mean, I think you've probably touched all the sensitive points there and I thank you very much for your impassioned speech.
Okay. Ask you guys just to, as I wind up here, ask you guys to have a heart. It's not about a business decision. Have a heart. You don't want to have the legacy that maybe when you were in position of power, you went against, used your position against people that are hurting. That's misfeasance. And you found out what that was last time. Don't let it happen again. Thank you and please make the right decision.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there any further speakers from the Whispers?
May I speak? I was a volunteer for Whispers.
Certainly.
Do I have to sit there or can I stand up?
I think you can just stand up.
I've got a lot of voice.
Voice, very reasonable.
I volunteered for Whispers when they were over at the old building there.
Can you identify yourself?
My name is Charlene Haddock. I'm a former resident of the downtown east side. I bailed myself of all the things that they had to offer Gospel Mission. I originated in Shaughnessy in Vancouver, which is a wonderful district, but I ended up down there. I'm so grateful, it's very emotional for me. I would not be here today if it was not for the Gospel Mission, the Harbor Light Mission, and many others. The depravity, the horrible things that happened to me on the street will never leave me. I'm 78 years old, but I got out of there thanks to Gospel Mission, thanks to Sally Ann, and I did something with my life. And if you could only give them a chance, give them a chance. I agree with rules though. I went into Gospel Mission one time drunker than a skunk. They threw me a sandwich. They said, "Charlie, come back in a week when you can behave yourself." And I damn well made sure I looked after myself and that I was okay when I went back. I agree with rules. I disagreed with over here, people shooting up out the back, hookers flying their trade. I went and spoke to a hooker and said, "Look, go out and find a truck driver. Go on out and don't do it here." Why were they allowed to do it there? I offered to be a monitor if I had backup. I know when there's a pipe and a breakout. I know when somebody's going to shoot up. And I mean, just please don't take it away. I would not be here today, honest to God. I was a dope addict, I was a hooker, and I was an alcoholic. And here I am today and I'm clean and sober for a long time and contributing. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Oh, I'm going to sit there, please. My name is Carolyn Bartkowski. And I have to say that half the stuff he said is true. What Kim said, I was in there, I saw it, and she's right. It was neat, tidy, and clean. But that doesn't mean I'm for the whole thing. I also walk my dog every single day, twice a day, in that area and I see lots of crap going on and I am fed up with it. Whatever they do inside that warming center is fine. It's clean. They do what she said they do, but as soon as they walk off that property, it's a completely different story. There was fire pits down at the bar behind it. Now, talk about Canfest. Okay, Canfest is for the whole community. We're not here for the down and out. And I am sorry for you, but we've all had, our lives have all been poor and we had nothing and we had to work our asses off just to get to where we are today. These people, right from the very beginning, choose not to work. There are a lot of people in this town who need people to work for them, but they don't work for them. They get fired because they have to get their drugs, all of this. It's got nothing to do with the warming center. But the warming center needs to be moved out of the area because it is dangerous for us who have worked all our life and that are clean and sober. It's not fair that they get to do whatever they want to do. And as far as Mr. Foster says about Canfest, I think he's in conflict of interest with you, Mr. Taylor, because I walked over there to see and he's manning a pizza place and they're charging money for that. And his best friend is running it as far as I'm concerned. And I just can't see that he's making extra money. Why was the warming center completely closed off with ribbon? Because they didn't want to park anybody. I myself talked to a camper that was parked behind the warming center. He got charged $20 a night by them. So what's going on? I want to see it gone. My husband wants to see it gone. And there's a lot of other decent people that have worked all their bloody lives and they don't want to see it there in that spot either. Bring it out of town, far out of town.
All right, thank you very much.
We have a very small community and there's the majority of us that have worked all our lives and we deserve to have, not look at that every bloody day. Thank you.
Thank you.
There.
Ma'am?
Hey, guys. Pamela Kennedy again. I would like to ask, well, I would like to clarify something. Dwayne Foster said something about the city not totally going against the warming center. I would like to say that's incorrect. There has been advisory committee set up and they're working diligently to help find the Whisper Hope or the clients a place to stay for the winter. So we are not hopeless or haters or not wanting to help out. We are actively working every day with anything that we got. We've been trying to get ahold of a realtor, whatever, to find some land. We need to, this is something that is needed for the town because we have individuals that are in need. But where it is located, what I see, and when I get told that I'm a liar, that's when my videos go up on Facebook and I will continue to do that because I do not like to be called a liar by any means. And as it is what I saw, why, if they helped clean up, why was Dwayne Foster cleaning up at 8:30 morning at the parking lot taking? Now, I don't know if he took the ribbon down or the sawhorses, but they can rip down the whole stadium, concert stadium, and those sawhorses and ribbons were still up morning. Yet, when I was getting into my truck today, Dwayne Foster, thank you for cleaning up, was cleaning up the garbage, but yet they were charging money for that. That is designated as a recreational area to be able to have the warming center there. Why is only Papa's Pizza allowed to make money? Why wasn't any other stands up there? Why is it so biased? And the advisory committee, why was that refused to be part of the rezoning so they can help find these individuals a place to stay for the winter?
Ma'am, can you back up a bit? The advisory committee of who?
It was set up, it's a team of invested leaders, so.
Are you talking about the social services meeting tomorrow?
Yes. So, and far as I am aware, and the question would, somebody had asked me to ask the city council as to why it was refused for them to partake in any kind of rezoning decisions or discussions. So that way they can help find a location for these individuals where they're not under the looking glass of the whole community, where they can heal and better themselves without being analyzed and judged. So why isn't the advisory committee being brought in?
It existed up until recently. The chairman of that committee is here this morning, Everett. I'm assuming at this point that the question on the table at the social services committee is actually, do we or do we not need a shelter and what kind of shelter do we need? Is that not what I'm understanding, Everett?
That's correct, Your Worship. So tomorrow's meeting, we expect a motion to be brought forward as to whether or not extreme shelter is necessary and then if that is agreed upon, then where that location would be and then obviously who would operate it.
Right. And so what falls to the city is where that location would be. I'm assuming that would be.
That's correct. Our role is strictly as an advisory, Your Worship, so we would, you know, if the city was to seek our advice, then we would be able to provide it to them based on that.
And Councillor Mosland sits on that, but I think Councillor Corlick is attending for the city tomorrow. Councillor Zalinski?
So I know very little bit about this group. So in terms of reference, what are you, this group made of and can you give us more information?
Thank you, councillor. I hadn't come today to prepare to do that, so I will provide some information to, you certainly can probably get that from His Worship and from Councillor Mosland. We do have a terms of reference. We are strictly a advisor group. We have no power based on our terms of reference. We are strictly that. We are made up of various members of the community that work within the social services agencies. Probably about 10 or 13 groups. And we will meet, we were going to plan to meet four times a year, but because of the sensitivity of the issue, we are working diligently to come up with some solutions to, you know, some of the problems that we have had here. I mean, housing is certainly one of them. Other areas, you know, mental health and others are also areas that we will eventually get into, but obviously, one of the key issues right now is the future of the warming center and/or shelter, whatever that may look like. But that'll be on tomorrow's agenda. And your guests are certainly welcome, although we just ask that those that are at the table are the ones that are allowed to vote and speak, but certainly you are more than welcome to attend in the gallery and that takes place at the regional district office and our meeting starts at 1:00.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, so it's going to be great to let the public know about your group and how many people.
Yeah, we have invited the, the meeting will be invited until tomorrow's meeting, so we will hopefully have a report to share. But you can certainly access the terms of reference and the minutes through your councillor and mayor. But we hope to make, once the minutes have been approved, our desire is then to make them public as well, so to keep as much clarity and visibility as possible, so.
We have a really packed agenda for the rest of the day, so I will ask if people are desiring to speak any further on this matter this morning.
I just wanted to point out that they're asking.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Sorry, Angela Nichols. I believe they're asking to be able to stay currently in the position there again, in the same building until another one or another situation can be. The advisory committee or council or whatever you want to call it are looking for other options and as you talk about, maybe for something in the winter or extreme weather, but people need a place to be for a lot of different reasons and not just because it's really cold outside. And the Whispers are holding, being there or being able to provide different services, not necessarily directed, but also, as you say, interior health and other associates or affiliates are working together to provide some of these services currently in or affiliates are working together to provide some of these services currently in one place. And so there is somewhere. Now, I know that perhaps there will be other places later on or other housing situations, but there isn't right now. And so I think we need to be mindful that right now, there are people and they are part of our community. And they do need this place and many have been trying to tell you that. And they've come once again today to say, can we please stay there longer? It's what I'm hearing.
Thank you, Angela. Councilor Thompson?
I'll turn the one off on the desk.
Oh, thank you. Has the Whisperers of Hope been actively looking since the closure and demolition of the other facility on Riverside to relocate a shelter? That's been, I think, almost a year, not more. So I would like to know if you've been actively seeking another location?
And I assume that's to the President, Dwayne? Would you like to answer that?
Ever since the situation developed, we haven't stopped looking. At the same time, it's a lot of things that are involved. I believe the city was also looking for over five years already. They'd come up with places that got flooded out, that we could put in six or seven feet of earth. It was always a place that needed so much work and it was almost impossible in order to come up with that. Society doesn't have the funding in order to revamp everything. However, when you are in a residential area, there is no place in this city that allows for, in all your bylaws, allow for a warming center or a place, a facility in order to help people and to take care of people. So if we go and find something, it has always been a real struggle when it has happened in the past to come to the city council and try to get something happening. And the city council, when they come up with something, previous council, it wasn't feasible. And it doesn't seem like there is too many options up there right now. And as far as we can see, the landlord is quite willing to carry on leasing the place there until something else is found. And right now, we hope that warming, that advisory committee can come up with something. But no matter where they come up with, the bylaw will have to be changed. Or the bylaw will have to be amended, or something will have to be done. So when you have a situation where you affect so few people in an area right now, and why not? We can put a fence around it so that people don't need to bother seeing anything. We can do a lot of things in order to make it comfortable for the community. And despite what was just spoken, there's, I don't say that everyone was spewing out lies. I said some of the things on Facebook are not true.
Okay, we're getting back into, Dwayne, what we had discussed before and the answer to answer is yes, they haven't worked.
Okay, I just want a follow-up.
Follow-up on that?
You turn yourself to us, turn. You've been talking about changing the zoning. Have you discussed with the property owner for his consideration in making an application for rezoning of that property?
I haven't talked to him about rezoning it because nothing has really, I just come on as a chairperson a couple of months ago and all this has been happening. So there has no, I have not made any discussion with the landowner to see if he can change the bylaw.
Okay. So again, the answer there is no. The zoning process there, where it would be two or three months long. And we have Councilor Crog patiently waiting here.
Yeah, it just gets hard. Like it's not that council is sitting here going, oh yeah, we're not gonna do this or we are gonna do this. We respond to the, what the community is telling us, okay? Is there a need? Definitely. Is location an issue? Yes, it is. Why is it an issue? Because of the effects and I think I saw a lot of kind of irritated looks when it said it affects just a few people. It affects neighborhoods, right? So if it was a controlled environment, as Ms. Gordon was saying, like this is what's happening inside, this is how clean it is, this is how everybody does chores, this is all of this stuff, sounds wonderful. But what the community sees and feels from not inside the building, but on the property, death threats to people, violence, drug use, all of that stuff. If you can control that, then neighborhoods wouldn't have a problem. The other thing is not trails, not trails like Trans-Canada Trail, but where people go and the routes they take to get back and the damage that may be caused on those routes. So if the client, like awesome letters, incredible props to you and the changes you've made, but it's, the community sees it as uncontrolled, okay? And if it's outside the door, even if it is on the property, it's still causing an issue, right? So that's what people are upset about. It could actually be in any neighborhood if there weren't the streams where the damage is taking place, going to and from, and the outside or actually the whole property. And the fact that just on this line of the property, now we have campfires in a fire zone. And those are people that use the services. I do like the Gospel Mission and the other places she referenced because of how they get their clients to buy into it and like the young lady said, if it's her home, then help to keep it a home, not piss off everybody in the neighborhood and then go further with it. Does that, like I'm not totally out of line. You may think I am and I'm a hater and I posted things on the internet and stuff like that. So basically, if it was a manageable situation and it's, you're asking for a chance to prove that...
Council, you think...
There was a chance? Nope.
You gonna wrap it up?
Nope. There was a, Your Honor, there was a chance down there that went bad. New chance appears to be going bad, ask for another chance. What's gonna be different this time? Like I, like I totally applaud a lot of the clients, everything like that, but when she was told she showed up, come back in a week. If you tell a client who is completely disruptive, you know what you're doing by doing that to that neighbor, that's gonna get us all kicked out. So don't do that or you don't belong here. See ya, don't bother ever coming back, right? But the community has seen none of that now and done and I apologize.
I accept your apology, but in fact, the warming center has kicked out a number of people, some of them permanently, some of them for a week at a time, because exactly that, they are attempting to enforce as much control as possible on what happens outside their doors. But thank you for your apology. Going to Les.
Les Johnson, resident of the area where the warming center is, that end of the town. So you've identified a serious problem and it's a serious problem no matter where you go and what happens. We don't live in a country where people can get tuned up, as they've said in one of the previous meetings. We don't do that anymore. That's not allowed. We can't, basically, we can say, don't do that, but if they don't do that, what can you do? Oh, you can't come back. And what happens is the community sees reprobates and all the other nice terms that they like to use of these people and they see a place that helps people like that. And obviously, the problem must be coming from that place. No matter who puts in a place, whether it's a city-run shelter, a shelter run by a nonprofit or a government, like government organization, it won't make any difference. All the good people in the city who are affected by the crime, by the small percentage of reprobates that are part of this cohort will just basically say, no, look, it's a big problem. The problem is, we live in democracy. These are, most of them are adults and you cannot tell them how to behave. You cannot, you can tell them how to behave, you cannot force them to behave the way that everybody wants them to behave. So here's the thing, you may get rid of the warming center here, you may get rid of the next thing that pops up, but this problem that I'm describing, that you just talked about, that's not gonna go away. You're basically saying, if we pull the rug out from underneath these homeless people, then somehow that's gonna make things better? I don't think so. Some people in this room may think that they'll just evaporate and go off somewhere else where there's a nice warm touch. But that's not the people who grew up here, the people who have come home because it's the last place you go to when you have nothing left. No, they'll stick around. And the mental health issue people who set fires because that's what they do, no matter what anybody says to these people, if they're not on their medication, they're gonna do that. So when, when well-meaning, afraid people beat council up, so council takes actions like this for a little while, some people think that's a good thing. I'm sure Pamela would be happily, you know, happy that there is a whole bunch of these people out there across the street making her life miserable. I get that, but they'll be all over the city for a while until some other shelter comes up. And then that shelter will catch heat from everybody else in the community when they cannot moderate the behavior of people who are not on their property because we live in a democracy. That's it. You know, I'm not suggesting any reasonable changes here, I'm just pointing out the fallacy of this whole thing. That's all. Mike, what do you think?
Yeah, nobody thinks that yanking the rug out from anybody is a good thing. Nobody's ever said that.
I, I would beg to differ from the comments I've heard in person and on Facebook. Believe me, I do.
Okay.
The people who feel that the only reason these people are in the shelter is because they're lazy...
Oh, sorry. Okay, now, the thing is, you're absolutely correct on a lot of that and people will be looking at a person that's no longer connected with the shelter. But guess what? The people that believe the shelter is their home, that want everything to succeed, yeah, you need to cut ties. People aren't stupid. We know by name, a lot of these individuals that are causing the problem, that's small amount of individuals, but you either have, everyone is welcome and we won't exclude anybody, right? Or here's the people that want the help and here's people that don't want help. Cut it. Cut the ties. Those are not our people. These are our people. They're not on our property. They won't ever be on our property.
I'm gonna run out of time here and Councilor Moslin had his hand up a bit earlier. I'm gonna let him make a comment. I'm trying to keep this tight and I'm gonna keep it...
But this is probably the most important.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Peter, I certainly do have a lot of sympathy with this plea for more time. Unfortunately, this is government and we don't work with a lot of malacrity. We have started finally a social services advisory group. Wish we'd started in the river. And I have confidence that their representation is a good one of both the professionals involved in our community as well as those impacted by those social services. And I'm waiting to hear their advice. That's all we can do is hear their, wait to hear their advice. If they met yesterday, then maybe we would have their advice at this meeting, whatever, maybe tomorrow. Just a couple of points I have in Ms. Gordon's thing she talks about, she says, to allow community members a safe place to stay while suffering from homelessness. And I guess that's one of the issues is who are the homeless? Who are they? You know, they're, they're from outsiders. They've come from the Okanagan. They're flooding our valley. Maybe. We need a point in time count. Yeah, okay, I'd sure like one too, but the province did do one. And you know what? Those statistics, I would venture to bet that those statistics based on a larger population probably apply to a smaller population in our community, which means that about 50% of the people at the warming center probably grew up here. Anyhow, and Councilor Crog brought up an important point too, the business of streams, he calls them streams, trails, please call them trails. I like trails. That's exactly right. These people are pedestrians, they're cyclists, they're walkers, they don't own cars. So they do walk from place to place. And what really worries me is more than a warming shelter that's in plain view, that I drive by three or four times a day. I like that. I like to have plain view. What worries me is what I can't see. And those camps exist and they're going to get bigger. That worries me. I walk the trails a lot. I know this valley really well. You know, underneath Observation Mountain, tucked away out of sight, there's a camp there. Over on the other side, Riverside, tucked away out of sight, there's a camp there that's So it's not just the warming center that's in plain sight that's a problem. It's what we can't see that's also a problem. I wish that when we do come up with a solution, that somehow we make the connection between the center and the outsiders. Because then we can really start to make our community safe. We, I worry, we all want the same thing. We all want a safe community. We all want to reach out. We want to help those in need. We all want that. Kind of differing about how we go about it. That's why the situation is complicated. That's why we need an advisory group, so we can bring in perspectives from different professionals. We are not social service professionals sitting at this table. However, eventually, this council is going to have to make a decision. We have asked our planning department to do a rewrite of the zoning bylaw. We're hoping it's coming down the pipe in September is when we were asked to have it ready because these, these social needs, whether it's a warming center, a community kitchen, or supportive housing, they weren't even, they weren't even in view when that zoning bylaw was first written. So we need to define those terms and we need to, and we would like to hear our staff give us recommendations on where would it be appropriate to put supportive housing? Where would it be appropriate to have a community kitchen or a shelter? We are waiting for that. I'm sorry, Dwayne, I really am, that we're waiting. I'm sorry to Amanda too. Because we are stuck in a government format, we cannot offer immediate aid. We have to listen to our advisory group. We have to hear from them and then we can make a responsible and informed decision and we will. In time, won't happen today. Anyhow, that's my point, Mayor. This is a difficult issue for our community. Please don't feel alone.
Okay, and Dwayne, just a really quick statement here. I'm gonna call a really quick recess to give the opportunity for people out there with other delegations to come in. Dwayne?
And there's a lady who hasn't spoken.
Okay, Pam?
My name's Ann Palmer. I'd like to just correct one thing. Through freedom of information, I have found out that there has been no point in time count... count here, done here in Grand Forks, ever. And they say that it's a real problem trying to do one, because our homeless are not the type of homeless that are hanging out in the street, presumably, um, they are what they call underground or hidden, and they don't actually know how to go about doing that kind of a, a point in time count, which is why one has not been done to date. They also stated it was, I believe it was the last mayor sometime in July, said that based under what he understood, there was less than 20 homeless people here, anyhow, not the 60-plus that have been promoted. So that's in response to your comment about the point in time. I would like to reply to Les about Pamela, and that how happy she's going to be when they're gone. I asked Pamela once quite a while ago, "How would you feel if the warming center was there and they were good neighbors?" They actually were good neighbors and were not loud, obnoxious, abusive, screaming, yelling, pissing on the side of the building, smoking up outside their crack, et cetera, how would you feel? And she said to me, "Fine, that would be great if they were good neighbors." Which leads me to the conclusion that based on the fact that Whispers of Hope was down at Riverside, which became a dog and pony show, and they've now been here and have proved that they are a dog and pony show again, that perhaps what we have is the wrong NPO here. And what we need is to create a new NPO, perhaps, with the advisory committee will come up with something, because it appears that Whispers of Hope are the ones that are incapable of doing this. Certainly, I have a relative in Abbotsford, and they had real concerns about a shelter that was going in right down the street with schools nearby, lots of children in the neighborhood, and, um, everybody was screaming and yelling about it. And when this facility went in, it went in with complete and utter rules and regulations that everybody has followed. They said there has not been a peep. It has worked well, the community has been happy, there have been no negative impacts. And yet, living in the area, we see the negative impacts all the time, being dragged down our street, noises in the middle of the night, and all the rest of the stuff as a result of the warming center. You cannot have a shelter where everybody can just wander in and out, willy-nilly, all times of the night. That just doesn't make any sense. So, that's all.
Again, Pamela, I'm not gonna go to secondary questions here, I'm gonna leave a last comment to Dwayne, this is the Whispers of Hope hearing. Dwayne, making it really quick, please.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna indicate that, um, we don't, we don't have, or we can't help people if we don't have them in a facility. We don't go out on the street and tell them what they should do or what they shouldn't do. And yes, they do have trails that they go on, um, for ease, for shortness, whatever. And lots of times, they get, um, abused because of the things that have happened. Um, I know there was a place broke into in town, and the person came up there and stormed through the warming center, accusing everybody of stealing something, when nobody was there, they found out it was somebody else. But Facebook and everybody else indicated that it was the warming center. I also, since I, and I've only been here two months, and there, about two months, two and a half months, as a chairperson, and, um, I may be correct on the time, but anyways, we have installed rules, we have, um, put things to task, we have been changing things so that they aren't, um, just willy-nilly out there, and, um, making sure that things are better. And, um, certainly, um, it takes, it takes a little while in order to get those things implemented. But I was coming home a couple of times from in the area, driving in the area, and I come across where the police were, the lights were on and everything else. And on two occasions, um, two people, woman and a man, were yelling and hollering and fighting in a very upstanding citizen's area of town. And one was throwing furniture out and kicking them out, and death threats were happening. And the other place, um, they were already, already had stuff out on the lawn and moving, and, um, and they were fighting and hollering and screaming. And this is 11:30 one time, and around 1 o'clock in the morning another time. So it's not just the warming center that has these problems. We, as human beings, all have problems. So therefore, none of us can stand up and say, "Oh, I don't have this problem," or "It's not gonna ever happen to me." Be careful, because it can happen to you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, folks, I'm gonna call a short recess at this point, and allow some of the people from other delegations to come in. So, two minutes if we can keep it really tight. Call this meeting to hold back to order, and council in the break has expressed their desire to me to continue with this same discussion. And so I am going to allow speakers to continue, and for this discussion of the warming center to continue. Um, in fact, what, what's taking place here is not unusual, but the delegation part is limited by our bylaws, but not the question and answer period, so we are into an open question and answer period here, and council wants to continue. So, um, I just, let me make sure, Trish, can you let Kevin know that we are continuing the same discussion here? I don't think he's...
There's people outside that want us to...
They are gonna continue the discussion on this issue.
Yes. I have no idea whether he is or not. Okay, thank you, Trish. And, Batman, you're on, identifying yourself, thank you.
Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, I'm Russell Ward, I live in town, I'm up on Donaldson. I see the impact from the patrons going to and from, because we have the trail right by it, and we've had this impact for a while. When we started the shelter, I believe it started in November, implemented for December?
No, actually, it started in late December, barely made it by Christmas.
Yes. And it was a temporary? It was a temporary warming center at the time for a three-month window, from the point of inception until March. And we've gone from March until August, which is, you know, we have a need. But during this entire time, Whispers of Hope has known that this is a temporary venue from, uh, an owner who is looking to do something else with the building, for a temporary funding schedule. And at this point, they've been searching for a year for an alternate venue for their, which we'll call it. They found one and got shoehorned in, luckily enough for the winter. But in all this time, they've never worked with council to find an alternate venue, they haven't worked with the community to find an alternate venue. And unbeknownst to Whispers of Hope, we actually have an advisory committee actually trying to figure out this problem off to the side without Whispers of Hope's real help. I just wonder, like, we have Councilor Mosland, we have people representing C4, we have the DBA, we have the mayor, um, working off the side of an organization who says they're the sole and only hope for this particular problem. And I think the community should know that without them, because they're going to be run out of time, that the community is stepping up to take care of the problem itself, and to try to address all the issues the community has with Whispers of Hope management. And I would like to say I look forward to seeing what the community does, as opposed to us always being angry of Whispers of Hope, "This is the only way we do things, and that's the only way things can be done." Um, I don't know what to say, I am in support of what's happening, but I also look forward to seeing what you guys as the community do to fix a problem that we have, and working together with everybody to do this. And I hope that Whispers of Hope can realize that it's not hating on the community members that are at risk, but it's working to find a solution that works for everybody. And I would ask Dwayne what he was doing as chairman of Whispers of Hope in the interim, but he's not here, and I'm sorry.
All right, Ralph, thank you. I don't think so, I don't know whether he's out there or not. We have other speakers? Yes, Trish?
Well, you sit there?
Yeah, well, you can sit there if you like, yeah. Identifying yourselves for the record. And you need to turn that on.
I should know this because the council's, we've been listening. Anyhow, my name is Patricia Horts. My address says that I do live in Grand Forks, and I'll try to make this short. I hope the council will not evict the warming center where it is currently, even though it does have probably issues from what you hear from other people, there's a lot of benefits for it being there, till they have another place. It's just like for us, if we have a home and we wanna move, generally, people find a new home before you move. We are very fortunate here in Grand Forks, we have funding for the warming center, we have staff for the warming center, we currently have a building, and yes, there's issues, but if you look right across all B.C., there is big issues, it's not just warming center, but things have changed in society. I love the Gazette, I get now, I don't really wanna pick up the Gazette. We had a nice picture of the new council, and we came here and shook people's hands. What we hear now is horrible, eviction, someone getting out, Mr. Baker having to stand down, it's terrible. Now we found a bylaw about why the warming center can't stay there. I just wanna say from personal experience, before, when the warming center, when we finally got one, was open at zero degrees, I came to a meeting saying, "Please, don't open at zero, it's cold, it's even cold at five degrees." Like, I mean, these are people, and therefore the grace of God go I, right? I've seen them in bylaw with their hands under the heater, trying to heat up. It breaks your heart. Nobody wants, I'm, okay, speaking for myself, I am very happy that we have a place for people to go, because it would be a lot, unfortunately, we, a lot of us are scared to take people home that need a warm place, but even in overweight, so if we shut the warming center, we are shifting the problem to other places, same within the washrooms and stuff like that, you see them already, they're being locked. And now with the heat, when I read that they were being evicted at the end of July, my temperature thermometer went to 40 degrees in the shade. Where did these people go? I don't, I think that's just so heartless. I mean, we were all very hopeful. Last year, or not last year, the previous council had a lot of problems, we were all very excited to have new blood. We have an issue. Right now, we have a building, and I think people, it should be allowed to say, let everybody work together to find a new place, not just turf them out. Now, um, saying that, let's see, my blood pressure shot up. About this bylaw, we have a motel that's just yards away, it's not very far. Who phoned in the fire at the RV mechanical? It was someone from the warming center. I mean, all we hear is the bad stuff. I'm not on the internet, I do not have a computer, and what I've heard, what people are calling people, it's absolutely horrible. How can we live like that? That's awful, talking about rats and all kinds of stuff. And, um, so anyhow, I know you're in a big dilemma because of the bylaw, I'm really hoping you won't evict these people. There's a strong support for the warming center, there's people dropping off food and stuff like that, but nobody comes out and says it because of the backlash. But I do not believe that the majority, my, okay, when you're voting in, lots of people voted for each one, and I do not believe that the majority of people that voted for each one of you want our homeless not to be dealt with in a nice way, that they actually have a home. Okay, you don't like the location, then let's get a new location. Give them a building somewhere else that works, not just knock them out and say, "Here you are." And another thing is, why are we blaming the warming center for every problem in the, in the community? It's ridiculous. You know? Now, the other thing, I just wanna end with this. And this is really sad. Right beside, oh, and before I forget, there's other people that sleep in that, in that center, in that industrial place, there's more people that are sleeping overnight. Anyhow, well, I'd like to end with this. Beside the Greyhound bus depot, we have a park and cell. Why are we treating an inanimate object like a car that may stay overnight and so-called sleep, and right next door, we're gonna turf out people that are human beings? It doesn't make sense to me, and it breaks my heart. And I really, really, really hope you will all vote that they can stay there, and we're fortunate to have the funding, we have the staff, and we have a nice place. Yes, there's issues, they're making it look like a home, it's beautiful with the plants and stuff like that, and for an antiquated bylaw that you can't sleep overnight, why are we letting cars sleep in a parking lot, right beside?
Thank you, Trish.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, and we are furthering with the discussions, I'll come back to Pamela if other people are, are, I think Councilor Zelinski wanted a chance to talk. Take your time and all the time you need.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I really don't know quite where to start, and it's unfortunate that Dwayne didn't stay here, so they could give us a little bit more information. Obviously, I'll, I'll speak for myself, I don't speak for council as a whole and whatnot, but some observations. When I came to town, we had Whispers of Hope down on the riverbank, uh, in Pink Building, that there were issues. They were evicted from the site and had no home. I think that was two years ago, maybe three. Um, knowledgeable people on board, uh, there's, I don't know how many, hundreds of thousands of dollars that have gone through their bank accounts, that, I, I guess I expected a professional organization. Having a professional organization looking after a need in our community, uh, one of the things that I, I guess I expected is knowledge of where those facilities can be in our community through the zoning bylaw. If we look at the current zoning bylaw we have today, I know a few of you counselors were sitting here when that bylaw came through. Councilor Mosland was right, uh, times have changed, um, and we know there's some deficiencies. So, one of the things that you're gonna hear me say a few times over the, the day here is, I'm very disappointed, disappointed that when this table passes resolution that we should have these definitions on our desks to debate before September, and that does not happen, it does not get us down the road where we need to go. We need these definitions in our bylaw, period. I think there's a, a misunderstanding, at least in my books anyway, of what your council can and should do. And to me, it's not necessarily building a house for supportive housing, of whatever scope it is. We have bylaws, we have zoning issues, they take time to do, they take public consultation, and it's a full vetted process. And we have the mandate to support those bylaws. Why someone hasn't taken Whispers of Hope, sat them down to say, "Hey, there's no definition for supportive housing, hey, there's a, a problem with the definition of commercial, this is how we get the changes done in the bylaw, so we can move forward." And they've wasted two or three years when a process like that could have happened in a matter of months, and we'd at least be getting down the trail to providing services for these people that need it in an appropriate place. And I think that's all that you're hearing, at least that's what I'm hearing from the community, is, let's do things right, let's have a process, let's make good plans, that so that people can actually get help. And being berated for not having feelings, that, that doesn't sit right with me, Mr. Mayor. We stuck up our hands to say, "Vote for us, and we'll do the best we can for this community." And there is a process to do that. And to throw all that out of the window to say, "Hey, you know, we should be treated differently..." you know, we should be treated differently, does not sit well with me. So to make sure we get further down the road, I was hoping that someone could explain the community kitchen to us. Because I think we're headed for the same wreck. Because I don't think it's zoned for the appropriate thing. So I was hoping with Duane in here, we could actually get the zoning up on the board to say, hey, does that fit? Because, yeah, I see another wreck happening in my heart. And for the community, we just want to follow the bylaws. That's what we're here for. We have a good plan with this other group to bring forward recommendations on how we can support the less fortunate in the community. That's all. Thank you.
And there's nothing else out there? Let's go to Pamela then to councillor Crogg.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that Les Johnson is completely right. It's not going to go away. We got to help these guys. But we got to do it right. Unfortunately, I do have to make a correction on him. It's not just me that's affected. We got A&W, we got Valmar, we got my area that is being hit hard. And they also, I don't have a voice. I'm using my voice from what I hear through the community. It hasn't changed there. It needs to be corrected. And when Duane Foster says that they tried to sit down and talk to everyone, I tried to sit on that board, but obviously I got kicked out because I have opposing views. I truly want to see these guys helped because they are sons and daughters of every one of us or loved ones. They need to be helped. But what I see on a daily, regular basis, the help is not there. At 2:45 this morning, they're wandering around whining and all that's morning. Where's the sleep? Where's the health? Where's the healing? I don't see it on a daily basis. They say that they kick out on a regular, kick out individuals on a regular basis. I see those hardened people back there every day. And I honestly can't say the names, but I have them on my phone. In which I have not been uplifting since I joined Whisperer Hope. But I got kicked off, so nothing's stopping me now. I want to say that it's the seniors and the children, the vulnerable, that are walking down and corridor, by the way, not trail, corridors. Donaldson Drive is a corridor for so many people in the Grand Forks area from every walk of life. There's young and old. And there is young individuals that are being followed by some of the individuals there. There is death traps. I'm allowed to swear here because I can repeat exactly what I hear almost every day by somebody that I know has neurological damage from whatever it is. But I can guarantee you that child, that senior, the other persons that's not educated in neurological damage does not understand and they're scared. Having somebody look at the ground and walk out down with their shoulders down slouched because they're scared. I ask the city and whoever's going to make the decisions on zoning, please think of all of us. I hundred percent, in my heart, want these individuals helped. They're not going to get the help if they're under the looking glass of the whole community all the time. We need to find a spot. If we can work it together, let's do it. There's a few other points that I want to make some correction on here. But I've lost it. It's everyone in town.
Thank you very much. Councillor Crogg, councillor Corlack has raised her hand. Would you like to see her first before you?
Yeah. If that's what you'd like.
Thank you, everyone, for voicing their opinions. It is a tough road to hold for us. As councillor Zelinski says, we do need to adhere to our bylaws and our policies and whatnot. We are not the only community looking for solutions to this issue. It's that we're small. The amount of people that in, I guess, if you're looking in ratios and things like that, is large for our small community. But to look all over B.C., look all over Canada. We're all in that situation. So whoever comes up with this unique solution that's going to solve the issues is going to work for everywhere. But for us just to go and, it doesn't matter, as Pamela was saying, where you may put this facility is going to cause concern for the residents around. It's a whole community thing. It's just not one neighborhood or that neighborhood or the downtown or anyone else. We're in this together. So together, we need to find the right way of doing things. And I believe the, the organization, the association or the group that's meeting tomorrow, I think they have a good handle on the different areas that encompass our community. And the fact that some of our councillors sit on that, including Greenham Mayor, I think that's important because it will give a good oversight of what we need. And we do know that we need mental health facilities. We need rehab facilities. We need this facility and we need that. We don't have that. They don't even have that in some of the larger communities. And for us, that is primary. We really do need that. And we are going to our, our UBCM municipal meeting and convention in the fall. We are going forward with that. That's one of our resolutions. We desperately need help. We need it throughout, everywhere to combat and, and work with the people that need assistance. I know that's not giving them a home. But also, you know, having personally gone through a situation such as this, I know family is incredibly important as well. And family also can step up and help. And I know it's not easy. It's a horrible route to take. Been there, done that. And I know what disaster it can be within your family. But it takes a whole community. And you hear that, a community to build a family, a community to raise a child, a community to fix things. So we need to work together as a group. I mean, honestly, I can't say I'd be really supportive of having the situation such as it is today in my neighborhood or downtown or here or there or anywhere. But it is a community issue, a provincial issue. We need to find a solution that's going to fix it for everyone. And not everyone will be fixed. It's impossible. We can make it the best we can. And I think that's where we're going forward. But we do need to follow our rules and policies. And knowing that three or four years ago, that there was a terrible thing on the way, that things were going to happen and that whispers of hope and deaths and everything was going to be, eviction was there, building was going to be torn down. That was several years ago. Now we're at this position now where we're facing the same thing. We had those years to look for something. And I'm saying we, as a community, but we're still looking. What effort, I think, and I think that's the key, to work together. Everything needs to be done on, in this particular, well, most every instance. We're going to be facing issues with the community kitchen. For everything. But the solution will come from within, from us as a group. Not this group or that group or us that are bound by different things. So I think as we go forward, it's important to keep our minds open. Mine isn't really open all the time, but I'm trying to, to, to get there. And it is education and knowledge about what we can do together to bring it forward. So all I can ask of us and you and the rest of the community is to find and look for that. I don't know if it's a solution, but a possible plausible working idea. So with that, I can only say, let's go forward.
And now councillor Crogg will wrap it up with a very positive message.
Actually, thank you for that because actually it is. There are, you pick up any paper, look on it, and you'll see shelters across the province. Some are just, they're, they're totally dysfunctional. They're disrupting whole neighborhoods, all kinds of stuff. And yet, there's ones out there that don't. And the reason they don't is because they're properly run. If, if, as Pamela said earlier, if it was a well-run facility, it probably would be welcomed in the neighborhood. I can guarantee, if we had a well-run facility, I'm going to be down there volunteering. Not, not sitting there watching them bring in outside store bought food. Actually there, teaching them how to cook, how to shop, that type of thing. And I can guarantee, I have chef buddies that would also do the exact same thing. But the key is, it's got to be a well-run facility. And the way it's going now, that that ship is sinking. And yes, it's taking down some of the people that will never accept help, that are causing the problem. But by trying to hold on to them, it's taken all the ones that have a future down with them. Right? So that's what we need. And that, I can guarantee, would get community buy-in. Even whispers down there, the amount of donations they were getting from stores and stuff was awesome. But guess what? A lot of that disappeared. Right? Why? Because of the, the lack of control. So I want to see a facility that actually helps people. And yeah, that's open and transparent.
Thank you very much. Your fails to amaze me, doesn't it? So yeah, I'm going to wrap this up at this point. I think that there's been some good points made. I think clearly it's been defined by council that our prime responsibility at this point in responding to the social services committee is to look at our bylaws, where this would appropriately go, and to define these services, which are new services. So to say that we didn't, you know, do it and we saw it coming, we, most of us never saw it coming. You know, the idea of kitchens, yeah, a little bit longer life there. But in terms of supported housing, this is brand new. B.C. Housing just got into this. The shelter we ran here for eight years was eight in the morning till eight at night. And we kicked people out for the day. And they had to sit there at eight o'clock and freeze while we waited for a board meeting at, at seven. And they're still sitting outside. So we've become more humane, but we haven't caught up to that in terms of our rules. And so clearly I support us moving forward with defining where this should be in our committee, the community and working with council. I think there's a really interesting way that we can do that when we look at our official community plan and we start looking at where these facilities can go. I think we should purposely put a cap on the numbers. Bring it to a reasonable level of, of numbers in one place. I think that's an economic driver of the larger forty to fifty bit units. And I think that we can do better than that with our own planning. So I'm going to call this to a halt and move on on the agenda. I want to thank everybody for their input and their patience.
Yeah. Where and who's going to operate it?
Well, those are things that will fall into place. I think our viability is where. Okay, thank you very much, folks. And I want to move on to Mr. Zimmer, who has been extremely patient at this point in waiting for an opportunity to, to comment here on the issue of the livability, I understand, of our community. Mr. Zimmer, if you want to come forward and take the place of honor.
Yeah. He's here just to say. He's right here. We'll get a copy and we'll have some presentation.
Oh, I do.
I am.
Good morning, Mr. Zimmer. How are you?
Is it morning still?
Well, again, this is a really difficult community issue. It's a limited speech. You're on. Michael Zimmer.
Thank you. Good morning. Michael's over here. And I see some common threads from very highly charged emotional presentation earlier. And not necessarily on the same level, but the same sort of theme, point of hardship and owner's responsibility. This is the magic clicker. So just point over there. So.
Can we shut the door, please?
So I fully understand how property taxes are determined, you know, in the county or so. For sake of brevity, I just want to talk about the owner's situation, all myself and perhaps others in the community. Take a look at my, my personal example. Look at the data. And then maybe end up in a spot where we can have a little bit of a round table on, on options. So for those that are curious about who, who I am and what I'm all about, to put a face to the name so to speak, I've been living in Grand Forks for 20 years. The last 18 of that as a homeowner at the same residence on 22nd Street. Mine is a single income household. I'm the earner for the household. Take care of my son and the responsibilities around homeownership. I suppose I fall into the demographic where nearly a hundred percent of my income comes from outside of the city and the region and gets spent here on mortgage, on banking, on food, insurance, et cetera. You could say I have an environmental conscience, I suppose, from my, from my line of work and my, my passion for the environment. Taking it upon myself to do, you know, many, many improvements around water conservation. I've got, all my downspouts are connected to water barrels, harvesting rainwater. Zero escape both my front and backyards. Very concerned about the carbon issue, global warming. So planted over 20 trees, shrubs on my small little, little lot there. And, you know, in terms of carbon, carbon capture. We've got several, three or four pocket gardens geared towards pollinators. Everybody likes to eat. Everybody understands the agricultural process. We need bees to keep the food process going. So play a small part in that. And also enjoy seeing songbirds frequent my yard now. Also support noxious weed management and around easements. There's three city easements that border my property. Pulling oriole zium, pulling oriole zium, nap and wheat. Those are regular tasks that I undertake on those city easements. In terms of improvements, look for opportunities for upcycle materials. You can see from the pictures there. Developed several stone patios out of repurposed brick. Go on the free-for-all, getting broken concrete slabs. People getting rid of rock, those sorts of things, just to add to this zero escaping landscape. Those sorts of things. So I have an interest in, in keeping up my property, you know, beautification. In a, from a market perspective, some might call that improving curb appeal. And that kind of links back to perhaps the property, property assessment picture. So I really like to know what happened since 2016. Here's a snapshot of my taxes going back the last 10 years. And you can see something significant has happened in, in 2016. And the year-over-year increase since that time has been, well, it's a huge question in my mind. If we look back to the last four years, my taxes have gone up 87%. So at, at the same time, my, my income hasn't followed that same trend. So this puts me in a, in an interesting position as, as well as probably others. How do I make up the difference? Is it, do I, is the expectation from the city that I have to take out a line of credit to pay my taxes? Do, do I have to really adjust my spending on necessities and perhaps my disposable income that should all go toward paying taxes? These are hard questions that, that I have to, have to make and, you know, seeking, seeking some guidance from, from council in terms of what the heck happened there. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not alone in this. Others have reached out to me and said, you know, I see you're going to council. Can you, can you talk about our case? So my neighbor across the road there on 22nd Street, similarly, his taxes has gone 72%. I had a gentleman approach me just recently, Barry Jay, he's in the audience. And he shares his story here as well. So, you know, for feedback on social media and, and others that maybe just, maybe intimidated or don't have the time to, to come forward today. Or maybe there's some in the audience. I, I don't know. But I'm not alone in this and a lot of people have questions. So what, what can we do about it? Well, there's one thing that, you know, being on an outsider here, we can, we can break away from that B.C. property assessment model and create a fair model, something in line with the rate of inflation. Like prior to 2016... Like prior to 2016, you saw those rates increase or fluctuate, you know, around one or two percent. I'm not sure why we can't, or the city can make a resolution to to have some sort of process around that. And then if the city is really interested in in that B.C. tax assessment value and creating the the tax from that, when, if and when that property changes hands, then they can have the reset, hit the reset button and increase it to a proper property tax value. But from from my point of view, I don't live in my house because it's an investment. I live in it because it's my domicile. It's where I have my family, it's where I live. And if it's not there, it's got to be somewhere else. Right? So my first priority is that it's it's the place to live. You know, if you look at it from an investment point of view or a property value point of view, that only means something to me if it, if I have to move in. And if I do, then I have to buy something with similar function to provide for my family. So if you're locked into that as a mechanism for tax calculation, perhaps the city has the strength and the fortitude to create a rebate program where you can take that value from the property assessment value, you can, you can take a calculation at a one or two percent inflation or increase, subtract it to, and then offer that up as a as a rebate to utilities or something like that. So those are just some thoughts, and perhaps, you know, since I, since I reached out to you, to all you folks, counselors, since my May twenty-seventh email, you know, over eleven weeks ago, perhaps you've given this some some significant thought and are providing, you know, options, a discussion for options. That's where we're at, that's where I'm at. Obviously, I paid my taxes this year. I I reached out to you folks prior to when taxes were due, but obviously didn't, didn't have any resolution or any tax relief at that point in time. So obviously, I paid my taxes as a good citizen. So I'd like to end up with a with a bit of a roundtable here, if that's all right.
Certainly is, and we'll ask for comments from council.
So I have some questions to start off, so I just.
Can I do that? Do you want to direct the roundtable discussion? Okay, recognizing that we have tight timeframe because we did go.
This is a yes or no type question.
Oh, perfect.
Okay. So I, being the Brotherhood of the Zed for last name, I'm going to go to the councilors. This one's going to get her first. Will you help me? Yes or no?
Is that a yes or no?
I have a tick box, I'm ready for you.
I got to turn off the mic because I want to make it very clear.
Yes.
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Counsel Crogg?
Oh, you're seriously?
Seriously.
Over to here instead of him?
I'm going by the Zed thing, right?
Okay, the Zed thing. Interesting, but as of right now.
Yes or no?
It's like a game show, you got to play along.
Okay, based on that, yes or no? I have questions and reasons, so I'm going to say no.
Counsel Crogg?
Well, I'm going to kind of go kneel on that one because I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, I know how much my taxes have gone up, I know how much taxes are in other communities, and we're right in line with them. I'd like to help you, I'd like to help me, so I guess yes. Roundabout way.
Counsel Morse?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
I'm going to have to have a qualified no as well. I want to help you understand what we're facing, but I'm not sure I can help you.
Yeah, that's basically what we got.
Okay, so I'm going to jump in since you started with me.
Yeah, I can too.
So the qualifying yes is we, as council as a whole, need to understand and and get a hold of our expenses and thus relating into what we ask for taxes from you. So I believe we can do better at understanding where the tax borders go and what we're using them for. So that's where I believe we can help you, help everybody in this community to know what direction we're going in, what projects take priority over others. And as you'll see in our five-year financial amendment coming up later in the day, we have a lot of projects that aren't getting done, that are still on the books. We have not gone through those as this council, which I believe we should, to make sure that we have the right priorities. So that's where my yes comes from.
Well said.
Your work.
Counsel Thompson, then we're going to go to the floor. Counsel Thompson?
I said yes, and I have no issue in reviewing the the tax structure on behalf of the city that we levy. Your increases, was that your overall tax bill, or was that what you, the city levied as a property tax?
That's including the homeowner grant as a primary. Is that your question?
No, my question is, did it include school taxes, regional district taxes, hospital taxes?
Yeah.
So so that, your numbers up there include all of those?
That's right.
Taxes? So it's who you pay the check to, not how the check is being divided?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Barry Chertis, I'm one of the people that provided that information to Mr. Zimmer, and as you can see, mine went up fifty-three percent in the last five years. Interestingly enough, a couple of comments, the one on the right. I live in Johnson Flats in the flood zone. Okay, I appealed my assessment this year. I recognize that that fifty-three percent, the majority of it was assessed value, not necessarily the city's, no question about that. I appealed to B.C. assessment, and you may as well talk to a rock. That's about how much response you get from them. So I wound up paying that, and that is net numbers after our rebates. The question I, the concern I have is going forward, the city, this fifty-three percent increase, we moved here eleven years ago because Grand Forks looked like a reasonably good place to live, the cost of living was reasonable. Those benefits have gone over the last eleven years. Utilities, taxes, et cetera, are now just sort of normal. You don't have a competitive advantage anymore. We just don't. In any event, if I look at that number, I'm really concerned about going forward, and I mentioned this at the last COTW meeting, the fact that the city has committed some three-point-six million dollars to a couple of interest groups. And I'm not saying they're not deserving, but it's the downtown business people and the people that are going to be bought up. We're losing eighty houses plus another thirty to forty properties, that the tax revenue on those will disappear. I'm concerned that where this three-point-six million dollars, how is it going to be paid? Are we, as the taxpayers that are still here, going to be asked to pick up that burden? In other words, is that fifty-three percent going to continue to climb? Or can I see some light at the end of the tunnel that is not a freight train? And I think that's a fair question. I have not got an answer from anybody. I don't know where all these funds are coming from that were committed. And if it's out of my pocket, you know, maybe I got to move. Thank you.
Barry. Just to clarify, I think the bump in sixteen was the asset management that we entered into.
And it was, yes.
Yeah. So has any other community in the province opted out of of the B.C. assessment authority approach to taxation? I'm not aware of any, I'm just wondering if you were. No, okay, so that's.
Can you give us a sample?
Yes.
I don't believe that the municipalities have an option to opt out. If you could clarify that, please.
No. Okay, we're there by legislation. Okay? So no, that, that's an interesting idea, but we'd have to be the first in the world to do that. You know, I'm just to to keep things tight here, Counsel Crogg, and then I think we're going to have to, and we have another speaker, okay? We have two speakers, three speakers, four speakers. Making them quick. Counsel Crogg, set the example quick.
Okay, yeah, when I look at my tax bills, I see that part of it goes to the city. And again, the other regional district, dah dah dah, all of that, without my homeowner grant, it's a lot more, but luckily I can still claim the homeowner grant. I bought my property for forty-six thousand dollars. It is assessed at two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, and my taxes are based on that. Right? So I would have loved to seen the graph, but with the cities, like the taxes of the city, does the fifty-eight percent, does the eighty-seven percent hold true for the city taxes, not the other components, the hospitals and the school? Because if it does, then that gives more weight. I was going to say, I don't know of anybody else that's tried to do something different with the B.C. assessment. Barry's right, it's like talking to a a brick wall, and whether they're saying your property's not worth anything because you're in a flood, that's only flooded once, and that was last year, in the past fifty, seventy years, or that all of a sudden your property is worth three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, and that's where we apply or we challenge them in hopes of getting what we want. There are people challenging because their property's too too low. And and you're right, it's a home, and I look at it as a home. I didn't buy it as an investment, but when it's time for me to leave my home, I would like as much of an investment, like as much value as I could get to carry me on in the seniors' facility or wherever I end up. So yes, I'd like the question of, are you going to help me? Or can you help? Because there's a little bit of a difference. Yeah, we can review things. Counselor Zielinski had a good idea, but if you think, we need X dollars to run the city, and that's what we get from taxation. So if my property's worth a thousand and hers is worth a hundred thousand, they're going to take that appropriate amount to make that final, final amount that we actually need. So if you ask anybody, their taxes are high. I haven't, I should do the calculations on mine and see, I'm eighty-seven percent. Because if you look at the first one at forty-six thousand to two-hundred-and-seventy, that's an increase of two-hundred-and-thirty thousand that I didn't have. So I'm paying on that. So I feel, but I'm not sure there's anything we can actually legally do.
Barry, I have other speakers here, is this just a quick comment?
Yeah, okay, comment, two comments on on Counsel Crogg's comment. First of all, I bought my place in eleven years ago, did some renovations the following year, but as of today, my assessment doesn't equal my sunk cost. That's a fact of life in Grand Forks. Okay? That's really the one issue. The other issue is the, if this continues, there's going to be a lot less of us around to pick up the costs.
Yes, you got it. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Tracy McLean, thanks for letting me speak. I came here a couple of years ago and built a home south of Nineteenth Road. I think you even showed up at my door one day and helped out. But I just want to say I'm from Surrey, from the coast, and the reason I came here to Grand Forks was to have a more sustainable and better quality of life. I moved up here with my sister, my sister and I built a house along, and my, brought my mom with us as well. So it's us three girls trying to make a go. I think we have done an incredible job with our home. I think we've built something to be very proud of. We're very, very happy with our home. Grand Forks has been wonderful, our neighbors and people have stopped in while we were building our house, and to this day complimenting us on the work that we've done. So it's great, I love the community. And then I got my tax bill. Got to say, it shocked the heck out of me. I am not disputing my assessment, I know how assessments work. I used to work in the mortgage industry for many, many years, so I know all that. My home in Surrey was assessed at twice the value, and it was thousands less than what I just got hit with. So my taxes from last year went up twelve hundred dollars net. To be more sustainable, that is going to be quite a challenge for us. I'm caring for my mother, my sister and I live together, and my father, who is ill on the coast. So sustainability is going to now become a factor with the taxes and with my heating costs that I am experiencing with my new home. Speaking of the flood, we've mentioned reassessments for these, my, my, and I don't know if this is true or not, getting revenue from from homes, I understand all of that, the homes that have been hit with the flood are being reassessed to virtually nothing, a lot of them, so that revenue has to come from somewhere. My concern and my thought is that the survivors of the flood, and I feel for the people that got hit, survivors of the flood are being now hit with a tax bill to cover that revenue that they're going to lose from these homes that are no longer going to be there. So I want to thank you for letting me speak, and I do have the same concerns as the sustainability, and I want to stay here, but I'm not sure if that's going to be possible because it's more expensive than where I lived in Surrey. And the reason for me coming here was so I could take care of my family, and I'm concerned that that's going to be an issue. So thank you.
Pardon?
I just want to fill in very quickly. I just want everyone who's concerned about the property taxes to be aware that the city can only control the taxes that we require.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we, it's, it's the, it's the school district and the regional district and everybody else that we levy for, but we have no control over the budget.
This is the city portion.
This is the city portion, you're saying went up twelve hundred dollars?
And we have two other speakers?
My name is Kelly Soroka. My husband and I moved here two years ago. We've been coming to Grand Forks for many years because we have a lot of family here. We bought a piece of property, we built our house, we got our property assessment notice in January, like everybody, we did appeal it. I followed all the rules about bringing in everybody's assessment around me for comparison, whatever. And again, B.C. assessment, I don't have to say any more about them, we all know that they they are difficult to deal with. So anyway, we got our property taxes. My property taxes are six thousand dollars. Thirty-two hundred of it is the city's portion, or thirty-four. We have no road, there is no Twenty-Fifth Street, all of that, we, our address is twenty-five, twenty-five, six, sixty-five, sixty-five, Twenty-Fifth Street. We have no sewer or water, we have no garbage pickup, we have no snow removal, we just built a house, we're coming up on retirement age, five hundred dollars a month if we have to pay it monthly, is a bit out of reach for us. Friends of ours have bought the lot on the other side of Twenty-Fifth Street, and they're in the process of selling their home, and they're contemplating not coming, not building their home here, settling down here. Grand Forks has so much to offer, and it was such a draw to come. But we came from Kelowna in a very high-end home in a very nice part of town, and my property taxes there, at the most, for forty-two hundred dollars. Six thousand dollars seems a bit outrageous. I don't know what else to say, it's just that I had to say something. My husband was supposed to be here, but.
Thank you.
Girl power.
Cover our speakers.
I'll go too.
No, come on, Kelly.
My name's Kelly Fears, and I live across the street from.
Kelly.
We moved here from Kelowna last year, and we moved here with the intention, again, of having a better work-life balance, thinking that a small town would be less expensive, the cost of living would be less here. So we bought ten acres, and it's in the city. And again, we sort of thought that, you know, it's got a real rural feeling, I didn't really, I've owned property since I was twenty-two in Edmonton, late country, in Kelowna. You get your tax bill, it's a couple grand, you pay it, it's the end of the day. We moved here, our property completely flooded, we carried on, we built our house anyways, and then we got our tax bill for fifty percent completion, and it's thirty-eight hundred dollars. So that means when we're at a hundred percent, our tax bill's going to be over seven thousand dollars? That's six hundred dollars a month for us to pay, and that just makes it feel like this town is completely not affordable for us to settle down here and move to and live and be part of the community. We hired local tradespeople to help us build the house. We've literally built. We hired local tradespeople to help us build the house, we've literally built the house ourselves, you know, took a year off work to do that, and the $7,000 tax bill, again, we're on the same road as Kelly, we don't have snow removal, we don't have a street, we don't have sidewalks, we have our own septic system, we have our own well, we're not really... And we moved here with that in mind, we weren't expecting to have city services, again, from a street in Kelowna that was well-maintained with street cutters and street sweepers and this beautiful property, and our bill was three times less than what it's expected to be here.
Yeah. Quick question? Yeah, don't have to answer, but what was your assessment here?
So, at 50%, they've assessed us at 468. But again, our property completely flooded two years in a row, and we spent thousands of dollars building it up and putting our own berm in and doing our own flood mitigation down there so that we could carry on with the build.
Okay, and the assessment in Kelowna?
We sold our place in Kelowna for $655.
Yeah, okay.
So, again, we might have a property that's worth $100,000 more with literally no services and paying three times the taxes.
My assessment's $450, and my house in Surrey was a million. And it was still thousands less.
I'm conscious of the time here. Mr. Zimmer, I think that you've achieved, hopefully, what you hope to achieve here in terms of getting council to really pay more serious attention to how livable our community is and the kind of predicament we're putting some homeowners in with our tax rates. Last comment from you.
Yeah, I mean, connect the dots, if you may, on the trend line here of 2016, just looking behind you, Mr. Mayor. Where does it flat note? You know, 10, 10 to 26% year-over-year over the last four, it's gonna just, like everybody in the audience who's participated, it's gonna price us out of being able to afford it. So we need relief, I need relief, and we'll leave it there.
And I think you've got council's attention, good presentation, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks for hearing us.
Thank you. Great. I'm sorry.
Gloria.
Yes, Gloria.
High taxes also affects rental costs for people.
Absolutely. Rental rates are...
And they're pretty high. Hard for people.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael Zimmer, and we're moving along. We have a Boundary Museum quarterly report, do we have someone here with that?
Yeah.
I'm here.
Yeah, yes, all alone. All right, you're on.
Hi, my name is Lee Gerhosa, I am from the Boundary Museum, and I'm just here to give you our two-month report, which is very late-ish. So anyway, we've got this backwards. Okay, good start. Okay, I'm gonna go back to me, when we had our AGM, and the new board is myself as president, vice president is Joe Titanglio, treasurer Kathy Rush, treasurer Monica Colesil, directors Laura Loder, Sam Semenov, and Bob McTalmish. And let me tell you, most of them, we couldn't do without. They're all wonderful people, and they worked very hard to keep the museum on its toes and go forward. So the last eight months have been very busy and very challenging for us. In April, we had three of our personnel resign to go their separate ways. We hired another person who stayed for a short while before taking another position. This left us with only one paid person, and she tendered her resignation at the end of June. So right now, we are without manager and assistant manager. So the board is taking up, excuse me, the board is taking up the slack, and we're trying to keep going, so we've got summer students, they are doing very well. Owen Cameron, he was from the Canada Works program, his term is now finished, so we have put him in the manager spot for now, and he is learning the ropes on how to go about managing a museum, so... And then we have our other summer students, Tanner Remo, Olivia Starczyk, under the summer Canada, summer jobs program, and we also have Samantha Starczyk, who is our crew Friday. We have decided to hire a student on Fridays during the school year, but it's worked out so well that we've kept her on during the summer as well. So they're very, they've proved to be very reliable, they've given display, they've really done a big display boost in the Black Hawk livery. They've rearranged it, cleaned it up really well, and it's really something to see right at the moment. We love to, we've had a few events booked in the, I don't remember from here, from the near future, such as a family reunion, and we've had a music show set up, a volunteer mansion, a blacksmith's conference, and a harvest fest, to name a few. We've also had a few weddings already, and just we keep on going, so it's a big thank you to all who helped us through the last few months. Okay, thank you, I think the next page. Thank you to Bronwyn Bird, she is one of the past employees. She worked on, she started working on the Dugaburgh display. We decided to revamp that, and she started to work on it, and unfortunately, she left, so we got Marilyn Struka, Flavorn, and Sam Semenov, and a summer student for the continued help to... They've really done a really good display for the Dugaburgh. We've designed this display room with a collaboration of ideas and many recommendations from local residents, board members, and the public. The 2009 Sinai X Dugaburgh reconciliation project, under researchers director Joan Hart, the Boundary Museum has successfully finished the project. We received financial assistance from the government of BC and the community gaming grants of the multicultural division. The grand opening was on March 29, 2019. Through a great collaboration, this project has been completed, thanks to the many people who worked on it and supported it as well. From the research of Joan Hart came the project for reconciliation, about as a picture of a stone erected in honor of the project, which is located in Brilliant. We also have a picture of, a big picture up at the museum in the display area. Hey, specialty events that are coming up now, is Boundary Woodworkers' first annual picnic, Grand Forks Roadmap picnic for Argentine Exchange Group, the kindergarten grad, Boundary Forest reunion, and the CLBC annual picnic, two weddings and a celebration of life. Hey, the ground's in the building maintenance, this year, the Boundary Woodworkers are assisting the museum with repair of the steps. Because they're in the hot sun all day long, they tend to wear out faster than we'd like them to. So now we put a special cover on them, and it's guaranteed now for 20 years, so hopefully this will last, and their support is so much appreciated from the woodworkers, they've helped us along many paths. The new extension into the existing Black Hawk livery, with the roof, the walls are now on, and the new floor laid. We want to say a big thank you to Marcy Creek Building Supplies, and also the contractors that that didn't mention there, so. Many thanks to Sam Semenov for overseeing the building operation. Okay, weddings and family gatherings, at our first wedding this year, the weather was great, our second wedding went very well as well, but it was 38 degrees that day, so they had a long, long, or hot day for them. And we also had the kindergarten grad, and that is cute to watch all these little kids running around, so. Okay, Sunshine Valley Community Services Craft Day was on Thursdays. Every Thursday, we host the Sunshine Valley Community Services, and they have a craft session open to the public here at the museum, picture gears and cloth hinking session. So, and these are our partners that we partner with, so this is it for our report this time, okay?
Thank you very much, Lee.
Okay.
We're good with that?
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Lee. And Counselor Thompson asked for a quick, short recess.
Oh, here we go.
Okay. We need the whole meeting back to order, and Mr. Foster, it's your turn, and you're updating us on the Board of Bruins.
Yes, I am, and with me is John Calullo, he's the new coach of the Board of Bruins, his second year, so.
Yay!
Came from, well, he's from Ontario, so they won't hold him, you know, against it for any, against him for that, but he was also, he played professional hockey in the United States, and his beautiful wife, and they just had their first child in April, happened to be on my birthday, so I feel connected to the Bruins. And, yeah, she's from Tennessee, and so it's a great addition to our community. So I'll just update you a little bit, because the city has been supportive of the Bruins, and that's just really to keep us connected. This is a significant year for the Bruins, if you have not heard, this is our 50th anniversary season, which is quite an accomplishment, and you know from, I think, when I was here last year, but some of the articles you read, for hockey in Grand Forks, long before the Bruins, hockey in this community goes back to about 1905, '06. I have made the statement through my, a lot of research that I've done, that Grand Forks is the birthplace of hockey in British Columbia, regardless of what trail and nelson may say. So the Bruins, the last few years, were some difficult years on the ice, but they continue to play, to perform, to be part of the KIJHL, and for the last four years, they've made the playoffs, and things are improving for us, not only on the ice, but we believe off the ice, as well as being in the board, I'm the marketing director for the Bruins, and last year, the business community blew me away, frankly. I'm so supportive of this community, the business community, I think it was a record in terms of support in the year of one of the worst disasters in Grand Forks history, and so I'm just overwhelmed, and I'll never, never forget my commitment to this community and the business community of Grand Forks for what they've done for Bruins and for many other organizations. Local players, of course, always have the opportunity for roster spots, and we have a minor hockey association in Grand Forks, and we'd love for some of those players to always be on the Bruins roster, it's not always possible, because you have to earn your way onto the team, and so we have players from many places, we've had a number of players from the United States play here over the decades as well, and we'll have two, possibly three, local players at our Bruins preseason camp, it's less than three weeks away. We appreciate the city of Grand Forks, who's been a valued sponsor. Your city logo has been a part of the ice logo since that was first introduced, and also on the patch, the city's patch on our jerseys as well, so we continue to appreciate what the city does for us. We kind of partner in different arrangements, one of them, of course, Family Day the last few years, where our players become very involved that day, and they have a hockey game in the streets of Grand Forks, and it's kind of a wonderful day, and our players as well, I should say, and our coach would certainly vouch for this, that they get involved in the community as much as they can. Of course, there's a hectic schedule for them, practicing is about every day, and they're on the road so much during the season, but they do what they can for our community. Family Day is certainly one great example of this. This gives you an idea of the upcoming season. And alumni weekend, because it's the 50th anniversary, that's set for the October 4th, 5th weekend, there'll be a home game against Rebelstoke Grizzlies, and so many of the Bruins alumni are expected back, and so that's gonna be an exciting weekend as well, as they return. Some of the other dates are on there too, the Parents' Family Weekend, and, you know, I alluded to that earlier. And so we just thank the city for their continued partnership, and your support is in many ways, and we appreciate that. Just to add to the, quickly, to the PowerPoint presentation, the Bruins contribute about $18,000 annually to the budget of the RDKB, and my feeling is that without that, minor hockey and figure skating would be, they have to pay more. So you can see that there's, this reflects on us supporting other organizations. The players are billeted, and they pay $500 per month to the billet families, this works out to about $10,000 or more per month, or approximately $60,000 for the hockey season. Much of that money goes back into the community, for groceries, of course, they eat a lot, and additionally, the players are spending their money in the community as well for the six months or more that they are here. Most years, we have players attending our high school, occasionally Selkirk College as well, and that's significant. Bruins organization and players support, they said, our minor hockey league program. Last year, we had the seventh man/woman sponsorship, and it went over so well, we did it for 13 games, we're doing it for every one of the 25 home games this year, if I can get the support of minor hockey, and it means so much to those little kids to stand on the blue line with the starting lineup of a junior hockey team. We're part, by the way, of the KIJHL, which is a 20-team league, which I'll maybe allude to in a moment. And so the Bruins provide a significant form of entertainment to the hockey fans in Grand Forks, and over the past 14 seasons, took me a long time to research this, I could have given more, but history's not always recorded the way it maybe could be, so I can only go back 14 seasons, at least 37 players that were on the roster of the Board of Bruins received college scholarships to continue their education and hockey careers, and I think that's extremely significant. And I think that's extremely significant. Another point is that having this team in our community brings recognition to Grand Forks. Not only a sense of pride, but visiting teams, remember. Their coaches and fans are introduced to Grand Forks every year. And on some occasions, they overnight in a motel and eat in our restaurants. The players and coaching personnel are also ambassadors for our city as they travel to 19 other communities, which make up the KIJHL. I'm biased here, but I believe we have the finest junior B hockey league in Canada. To Williams Lake, in the north, to Princeton in the west, to play throughout the Okanagan and the Shushwap, east to Golden and Kimberley, and south across the border to Spokane. Our team represents Grand Forks. And I think that's extremely important for us in terms of not simply sport tourism, but just tourism in general. Thank you to the city. We would hope to see some of the elected officials at some of our games this year. And if you can't afford it, phone Jerry, and I'll pay for you. Any questions? Yeah, please. I try to be as brief as possible.
Yeah, still waiting for you guys to get a big Bruin costume so that I can wear it as a mascot. We could call it Forky. And I would just run and hop. I can't skate those.
We'll bear that in mind. And we've had a mascot off and on, and we have a costume, actually.
Is it grizzly or stuff?
It's more like a jiffy bear, but.
It's not as ferocious as a grizzly bear. But we do have a costume, and we'd love to see you in it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll work on that. I'll contact you.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? We just appreciate you so much. This is really a good news story. And you go through, I mean, you're challenging times as a council. And I appreciate you guys and for what you do for Grand Forks and not only for the Bruins. But if you can help us in any way with suggestions, individually, you come and see me. We're working towards a great season coming up.
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Oh, one other thing, one quick thing. All of our home games can be watched anywhere in the world, I guess, Kevin. Webcasted, that's been happening, all of our games. And you can imagine, and the last I heard a year ago, the people that set this up for us, the company, said that the viewership has tripled, and it's gaining every year. So you've got people from all these places, from all the other 19 centers where Grand Forks, the Bruins, play, are watching Grand Forks. And we're going to get our top sponsors on this year. And so this business should be very pleased to see them, not only for the, you know, the home situation, but the visitors. And I think that's significant in terms of tourism for our community. Great stuff.
Excellent. Great. Thank you very much, Jerry.
You're welcome.
John, you're going to Grand Forks for the second year.
Thank you.
Jerry, you don't want to say something?
Oh, come on.
I am a BC resident.
Take away Ontario and I'll talk whatever hit you. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us down to presentations from staff. And we're looking at the in-kind options update, which we also have on the agenda for tonight. But this morning, we have Graham Watt talking to us about in-kind options. Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Mr. Watt. Great, so if we can switch the presentation, that'd be great. Just for clarification, from what you're giving us here right now, 6A, how is that different from 6C? Sure, so this is basically an update report based on the discussions held with residents in the affected area over the last couple of weeks. It's separate from the report from the planning development department. That's about the, basically about the housing analysis. And that's something that's, you know, kind of background discussion on specific on housing. So they're complementary, and they could have been together in the agenda about how they got dropped in, was separated. So I think we could probably treat them as a whole in terms of discussion to the second report as, you know, as part of this presentation. Just wanted to know how deep you can get into all that other stuff. As deep as is needed, but with respect to the time, of course. So today, there we go, perfect. So today, we're just going to kind of look at how we got to the discussion of in-kind options, a brief review of the concepts from July 15th, as a reminder of what kind of our boundaries were, overview of the meetings with the residents, and then talk about the next steps. And we'll be able to refer to the report on housing options. And Wendy, who authored the report, is here also with us. Everyone is aware of this slide, of course, but we use this as a basis for talking with residents and looking at the different resources they have coming into this, and talk about some of the support. So I'm going to breeze through this part really, really quickly, but just for content to gain, this is the role of the city that was discussed last month. So affordable and attainable housing, equity and fairness, sound investment, so in line with the asset management policy, and taking into consideration a lot of lifecycle costs, and within the capacity of our organization to deliver. So we had five meetings over a two-week period. A total of 60 people from the buyout area attended. And Dawa was really positive about exploring the options. And I also want to mention that there was strong interest in continuing to advocate for additional funds for pre-flood values. So both things were there. I think residents attended in good faith for a discussion about the options, but definitely wanted to make sure that that message was still to be received by council. One of the underlying themes, residents really have a strong interest in retaining land ownership. You know, they echoed a number of times the comments from last fall that, you know, a service lot for a service lot kind of thing. And wanted to explore, first and foremost, how that was attainable. But residents were also really interested to hear about the lease auction, particularly when we walk through some of the scenarios that are available. So some of the issues that we consider when we're looking at land ownership, it can create some more complications in how we do things, but we want to make sure there's options on the table for that. As Wendy's report discusses, that equity ownership aspect still needs additional research for it to be viable. And we also had some residents who were already looking at properties, empty lots, and kind of buying one on their own. And a common theme in response there is that doing one-offs are a lot more challenging for us to do, both in terms of costs and also in terms of capacity. And it makes a lot more sense to service a larger number of lots. So that's kind of some of the themes in the second report. So the design of the acquisition program is still pending. I'll remind everyone again that these are, you know, kind of exploratory discussions. But the aim of it is to have acceptable solutions on the table for when the buyout team is in place, land acquisition is in place, and is able to be meeting with residents to work on their agreement. So I'll present basically each of the options that was identified last month and provide the response from residents, as well as some scenarios in some cases. So for our meetings themselves, only one former renting resident from the buyout area actually attended our meeting. And we referred him to the BC housing intake process. And subsequently, the information meeting on the 19th Street development. 20 to 25 people at that information meeting were flood-affected. And one quarter of applicants right now for that project are flood-affected. So some from the buyout area and some from other areas that were looking at affordable housing needs after the flood. So there's a really strong interest in the community overall, but it wasn't something that was emphasized in our discussion. I think a lot of the people who were renting at the time, they've been, you know, working through various options, and not all of them great since the flood. But I think they're very much looking forward to having newer rental capacity in town. This topic generated a huge amount of interest. We had 24 people attend and participate in this discussion. The feedback in discussion was really good, a lot of questions. And then three of the people, kind of, we had more in-depth discussion. And we use that to build scenario one, which we'll go through in a moment. So reminding what this looks like, and it's referred to in the second report. You know, servicing sites, developing a municipally-owned local home park, as an example, or dedicating land for moving houses to, and that kind of thing. This provides quite a bit of opportunity, quite a bit of value, and also looks feasible from a servicing perspective. So we're kind of in the middle of that analysis right now. The borrowing aspect of it is, we started exploring some of the costs that could be involved. And it looks like it wouldn't, you know, extremely high to the amount of funding available for the individuals that could be able to attain it. We'll go through the center in a second on that. So this is based, it's kind of aggregated from a couple of the individuals. It's not one specific scenario. But there's a whole slew of people who are in this category where a pre-flood value of approximately $100,000, they might have had a DFA payout of $40,000 to $50,000, and a post-flood value of less than half the original, $45,000. So in this scenario, the home not being repairable, the homeowner may have bought an RV to live in with DFA funds. And so their remaining $40,000, if that's the post-flood value, or $45,000, would not be enough to replace the home without significant in-kind support. So it's kind of the situation that we'd be facing without support. So with a home not being movable, hypothetical option that we're considering is city basically developing a park or sites where manufactured homes could be placed. Servicing and land development costs could be amortized over kind of lifecycle costs for the land servicing. And that would add about $125 a month to that person's pad rent, utility fees, whatever that kind of thing, so fairly attainable. And then if they use that $45,000 payout for a down payment on a new compact manufactured home, we've seen some pricing where they come in, some nice ones come in under $100,000. So they could finance the remainder of it for, you know, $300, $350, $400 a month, depending on how things were arranged. And so the total cost of owning a new home is less than renting in this circumstance. So the idea of placing a new manufactured home or a lightly-used one, the homeowner is able to use all of the payout for purchasing the new home, and it would be highly attainable. So that's one scenario that in-kind support would enable as a possibility. I'll kind of breeze through all of them, and I think we can come back to them with questions. For those homes with, or landowners with some resources but still needing in-kind support, the city could provide some city-owned service lots at a market value with service costs recovered over time. So if people are able to actually purchase all or a portion of the market value of the land, it seems that a lot of people want to retain ownership. So if this is attainable within their means, then this is something we could certainly help with by supporting the moving of houses, contracting the people to be involved with that, and then working with on servicing costs through local service area or something like that to cover service costs over time. So scenario two, based on a similar kind of pre-flood value. In this case, though, with a $55,000 DFA payout, homeowners would come to a place where they repaired their home to a reasonably good condition. And so that current market value may be close to, or in some cases, may be greater than pre-flood value, depending on the amount of own investment that owners did. Of course, $100,000 is still not enough to replace that home, that repaired home, without in-kind support. In this scenario, the home is movable. And so the city could support moving the home onto either a leased or a purchased lot. But as a leased lot, we can spread the costs over time and not have any markup in terms of market value of that land. So if the servicing, the land development fees were $50,000 overall, that could be amortized over 30 years to about $210 a month at our borrowing rates. And then that basically covers all of our incremental costs. The owner keeps the home, so the payout itself would be reduced by the value of the home. But then the cost for the new foundation, additional moving landscaping or other incremental expenses could be factored into it. So it's a very individualized plan. But that would be attainable within the funding levels that we have, and also spread the costs over time. And the bottom line is that the homeowner may be able to keep more of their total payout and still be able to have an equivalent dwelling. The question of whether or not the city chooses to sell that land in the future or to change the lease rate to be more comparable with what a private market would be, that would be up to, I think, some policy decisions. But for a period of time or for the life of the lease, this would be something that would make it attainable for the homeowner. Scenario three, and the council will get a copy of this as well. We'll post it as well on the city site. But an example with a pre-flood value of $200,000. In this case, maybe the owner may wish to look at equity of, partial equity of a property and servicing costs spread over time. And maybe they'd be able to keep more of their total payout for the dwelling and then extend that service cost over time. So these are a few of the different options that were explored because of this meeting about moving homes and obtaining city land. And then the other option, which involves greater work and partnership for perhaps, or cooperative development, to get new sites going. There was four residents attended a discussion about that, and they were all very interested in one kind, one form of this development. They were interested, you know, could Clifton Estates be extended behind Clifton Estates? Or could we look at another, something similar to that? They were all also interested in the idea like Moody Estates out of Christine Lake, which is a manufactured home development. So with this partnership idea, is there the possibility to transfer savings onto the purchaser? So passing through the developer on the purchaser? Could we maintain affordability through covenant or other measures? Those are the questions that were raised last month. So in this scenario, which actually should be labeled scenario four, not three, but the homeowner pre-flood value of $300,000 as the example, based on dialogue, DFA payout of $65,000 and post-flood value of $250,000. In some of these cases, they use that DFA payout and their own labor to bring the home to a repaired condition. But they're looking to downsize, perhaps. They don't want a larger property to take care of. They're looking either duplex or compact single-family. And so if the home is not movable, then of course, it's, you know, terrible that it would have to go to the landfill, but some homes may not be movable. But if we can work with the developer to site and build or source homes, such as modular homes on city-owned land, the servicing and land development costs could be done in partnership with the developer. And then we would have to have an agreement in place to pass the land value savings onto the purchasers and spread the servicing costs over time. So the homeowner wouldn't keep homes, so the payout would be the full current market value. And then the idea is that they'd be able to use all of that for the costs of developing one of those new homes, which I understand could be, you know, $250,000 to $300,000 for total site development for something similar to Clifton Estates. If we're looking at, you know, a modular home or manufactured home, it could be about half of that. So this scenario could work for a couple of different types of homeowners. So reminder again, this is preliminary, and council asks that we explore the options. What we want to do next is do a survey for all the landowners on their preferences. Like if going into a negotiation, they would want to have, what options would they want to have on the table for consideration in negotiation? And that's basically what the survey will provide information on. And we propose to have a meeting at the end of the month to, you know, discuss these options again with landowners who have heard about them over time. And then meanwhile, the department is continuing to work on costing and servicing options to bring for a council decision in September. Now, the resolution that's on the table today for the second report is specific to some of the costing and development servicing planning for those options, and we'll come back to that in a minute. And so the other really amazing thing that's happened here is we haven't finalized it yet, so, you know, don't want to let the cat fall out of the bag. But Canadian Red Cross has funding in place for housing now, facilitator basically to have Boundary Family Services case managers work with an independent contractor to help individuals develop a housing plan and understand their options with regard to moving houses or, you know, lifting houses, different things that may be within or outside of the buyout area, and helping them understand their options. helping them understand their options so that they come in really informed about what the feasibility of different parts of it are, and it helps kind of outsource some of that, so it doesn't all have to go through a building inspector. So that funding hopefully is going to be finalized soon, and we'll be able to have those resources in place, you know, especially with the continued support of the boundary family services folks. That's about all of the topics that I have. So if you have any questions on this or the next presentation or the next topics, well, if you can.
Krog, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did, but now I can't remember. It was good, though. It was a good question.
Mr. Moslin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Watts, for a really good and thorough presentation. I'm looking forward to more details. I guess when I consider the term "buyout," what I've got in my mind, I don't know if it's actually appropriate, is I've tried to differentiate between buyout and expropriation. And the way I've done it is, in my mind, is that the buyout is voluntarily entered into. The homeowner wishes to move and is seeking support. That would be the buyout. In my mind, an expropriation is homeowner doesn't want to move and is prepared to go into an expropriation in order to be, you know, give up their home. So my question is this, Mr. Watts, do you have an understanding from talking to residents, approximately how many are willing to edge or enter a buyout versus how many are waiting to be expropriated?
Through the mayor, there's a couple of things to unpack there. Council Moslin, the term "buyout" and the term "expropriation," buyout is a very general term that includes the whole process of, you know, moving properties from one place out of the floodplain, basically, this overall idea. And buyout is a generally accepted term for, you know, across the literature about how it works. Expropriation is highly specific and speaks to a strongly-regulated kind of legal process where someone does not want to move, and the city forces the removal of that person and works out the payment over time. It's, from my understanding, incredibly expensive and painful for everyone involved, and doesn't actually end up providing more than current market value and some moving costs perhaps, what can often happen. So the idea with the program development, knowing that some number of people would wish to remain if they had the choice, what can be an acceptable solution for them to have in the future that they would accept a buyout payment as part of the package for enabling them to move out of the floodplain? It's different than expropriation because it's a negotiation for change. It's a change management piece, and it enables something that somebody could see as acceptable. Part of it is finding something outside of the floodplain, and it maybe isn't ideal, but it's a life-changing decision that's brought about. Like you say, it's not voluntary, but the emphasis, what council's asked us to do is develop acceptable solutions in dialogue with the residents. We haven't done a survey of current favorability on this. It could be a question in the survey that we bring out this month, you know, in terms of, you know, on a scale of one to 10, how much would you want to move? The question is what's acceptable, and are you likely to want to fight this, or are you just looking to find the best option over time and want to make sure your compensation and your in-kind enables that? So basically where we're at now is we don't know the total numbers, but focusing on developing acceptable solutions is what we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Yeah, but I guess the question is voluntary and involuntary, no matter what term you put on it. And so I do have some suggestions for survey questions, and of course, the first one is, is do you want to leave your home? Anyhow, that's, I'll also see if my floor is now to...
Commissioner Zelinski.
Thank you, Commissioner Moslin, here. I'm not necessarily where Commissioner Moslin is right now, and I'm looking forward to discussing his council report at the regular meeting because I think there's some very good pertinent questions there. So I'll just deal with what's in front of us now. And one of the things is, I don't think the seven of us have had the discussion of whether we want to be in the leasehold business, whether we're going to have another department of land managers, and that's a big part of this, these suggestions. And I'm just wondering people's feelings on getting into the private land management business. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Well, yes, your worship, just to, that is quite a concern mine, was one of the concerns we sent to staff, is do we have the capacity to deal with this? And Commissioner Zelinski brought up the complaint about land management. So the question is, is do we need a partner to help us with the land management of this? I hear some information about the Red Cross. Anyhow, so to add on to Commissioner Zelinski, do we need a land manager? Do we have the capacity to manage this?
Graham?
Through the mayor, thank you. So something we've considered in great detail for two reasons. One, municipal dealings in land have a lot of extra encumbrances, right? Everything from resolutions about sale and acquisition through to notices and that kind of thing. So many municipalities have a land agency of some kind that a development corporation can acquire land, build land, et cetera, and it maybe would have just one shareholder, and that's the city, and they would get an annual report or quarterly reports and have representation on there. So making the process itself smoother, still under the mandate and control of council, but enabling that kind of procedural part of it to be eased is one part of capacity. So staff is exploring what governance of that could look like. Other organizations have a land trust that they share with other affordable housing partners, and municipality has residents or sort of representation on that land trust. It's often dedicated to affordable housing. So there are options out there to basically make part of it easier, which is the municipal dealings in land question. The second part about capacity and who could support and delivery of that is certainly there. I think it's to look beyond just the flood mitigation and look at future dealings in land that the city may have, including development of industrial and park lands in the slide pile area, as has been claimed over time, in dealing with some of the airport industrial lands. There's longer-term business case to be developed for that type of entity, and so that we're kind of at an early stage of that. If this is going to be administratively able, we definitely need to make sure it's sufficient.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things is, first of all, I'd like a list of those municipalities of 5,000 and under that have their own land corporations and are involved in those type of businesses because I don't know of any small communities. Larger ones I do know. The other thing I'm going to suggest to this table is that there's a lot of stuff in here, and I don't know if this is the time to workshop what lot is good for leasehold, whether we're, you know, supporting taxpayer dollars to move homes or build foundations or things like that, and I would like to put this discussion over to a separate workshop that we can really work on.
I'm assuming that as well, that this is not to get into that level of detail today. Is that everyone's understanding? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, your worship, through you too, through Graham. From this presentation, I take it that you have not, you have not, the negotiations with individual property owners has not occurred yet? And if not, can you tell me when you anticipate that might be happening, or am I jumping down here for another presentation?
This is a correct place for this presentation, so we have not started any negotiations. It's only individual kind of exploratory discussions and case studies. So I've got up on the slide, updated the timeline. We did legal review on the request for proposal for the land acquisition team, and that's going out this week. So we anticipate beginning of September, they'll be coming on board. Part of the request for proposal is to, you know, give us insight into their approach and their design, and then hopefully that will move us into the ability to, in September, work on having that designed and having it approved through our funding agreement in October. So that process is all initiated, but I don't anticipate that we'd actually be able to get to any agreements before late October or probably into November. There's some people who have already made other commitments for their, you know, buying other homes, and they're ready to deal right away, and there's others who may need to come later. So there's a bunch of considerations that need to be developed in that design.
Follow-up?
Just a follow-up, yeah. I was just approached by, well, actually, I'll disclose it, it was my nephew and his wife who were impacted by the flood, and they haven't heard anything from anybody yet with respect to a potential buyout or offer or had any one-on-one meetings with anybody about anything. So they were just asking if I could make the inquiry as to when they might expect that to, is that going to be in the near future or in the far future or whatever?
Through the mayor, so for emphasis that we have, we'll be having a public meeting on the 29th, residents are able to schedule appointments with us to discuss the options, but we don't have time to meet with everyone one-on-one, of course. The case managers are going to be a primary point of contact for kind of building those options out, and then, you know, we've got an email list for the survey and that kind of thing, but the actual negotiation and discussion won't happen until the land acquisition team is in place.
So when, are the case managers working with individual property owners now?
Yes. To help them understand their options.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Zelinski?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I was understanding that the case manager's contract ended at the end of August, and your negotiations aren't going until start till September. And I'll lumpen this stuff from the planning department. Two things that I missed is who's going to do it and what's the budget, because there's a lot of stuff in here, and we've heard how overworked staff is already, so those two things are missing, and that's why I'd like to sort of postpone this conversation for a better duration. Thank you.
Getting into further detail, you mean? Okay.
So, okay, so the case, yeah, and we can certainly follow up, the case managers, their current contract is ending end of August. This Red Cross funding is kind of a bridge, and it's specific for supporting that, you know, housing plan piece for the individuals, so we're waiting on approval of that funding. And I don't know if it's, there's been a strong request, and I believe movement on the request for funding from the province, I don't know if that's been finalized, but I'm confident that something's going to be coming out of that. And absolutely, in terms of the second report, I think we should probably deal with that under the resolution from that report.
Okay. Further on this matter, anything from the gallery? Hearing none. Moving on then to the Wayfaring Project Rural Dividend Fund application. Council is aware that this is an application for a $50,000 grant. $40,000 of that would be grant, and $10,000 would be city contribution. Comments on this? We're going to deal with this at tonight's meeting as well. Commissioner Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is, we had Wayfairing signed in the budget. Money was spent on it, money was transferred out of that into other stuff here recently, and now we're going back for more money, so, a little more explanation, please.
Is that you, Graham?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Changing hats. So there is $13,000, I believe, left in the budget, still remaining in the budget for the implementation of the Wayfaring signage. The recommendations from both the BCEDA and Roger Brooks were, you know, basically strongly to have a more cohesive program for Wayfaring signage, and looking around at other municipalities, Merritt has done a comprehensive plan and implemented it. So we're basically looking at how they develop theirs and going forward with that.
So just for clarification, the $13,000 left in the budget is going to be our contribution on what you're asking for here?
In terms of where the money's coming from?
That's right.
So we're looking for $10,000 from our budget, which I understand is adequate, and the budget is adequate to cover that?
Mr. Mayor, this is only the application for a grant. By the time the grant is awarded, it could be next year. So if there's any other funding or if the budget has changed for the current wayfaring signage, we would discuss it with council then.
Okay, and so we have a motion here. Do we want to go ahead with it, the committee of the whole here, that the council directs staff to apply for this rural dividend grant? I'll make that motion. Commissioner Korbeck, we don't need a second or on it. Further discussion on this? It seems like a lot, but in fact, I think if we do this poorly, it's not going to work for us anyway. So the planning and, you know, how it's done, I think is important enough to spend this kind of money, personally. Commissioner Moslin?
Yes, your worship, Roger Brooks is very clear that it needed to be done professionally, so I can understand the expense. I guess my concern is, is whether we go and get the grant. We're going to have to certainly be reconsidering this part of our...
Absolutely.
Yeah, contribution.
Exactly. Okay, this is to go ahead with the application for the grant. All those in favor? Carry on. And moving forward then on to the next item C, strategies to increase affordable housing and attainable housing options in Grand Forks. This is, in some cases, more detailed than we had. It talks about our involvement in these kinds of initiatives, and I will turn it over to Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yes, this is just another, the next step, it's kind of a baby step toward creating, like we're losing approximately 80 lots, correct?
Lots of homes.
80 lots with homes. And through various strategies, not great budget implications, we're trying to increase the supply of housing, whether it be rental lots, leased lots, multifamily projects. But this report just outlines some things we can do right away toward that. The first things were to just do some communications around, okay, garden suites are allowed, tiny houses on wheels are allowed with temporary use permit, just because we've only had the one application for a tiny house and no garden suites, I don't think, definitely. Pardon? No garden suite applications have come forward since the buy, there's only buy laws changed to allow them.
Okay.
So...
On property that, okay.
Yes. So part of this is just, maybe we could do some communications of letting people know that they're allowed to do these things. So that's kind of one strategy. Actually, at the end of the report, there's a list of 10 strategies. Kind of the low-hanging fruit to try and increase the number of homes available for flood-impacted people, but also for anybody. Okay, that, another, oh, sorry, another thing we could do is delegate the, right now, for a garden suite approval, it has to come to council for a development permit. That's the way it's outlined in the official community plan. So we were thinking that to make it a little easier for people is that the staff could be authorized to issue a development permit, and also that the fee would be waived for a development permit, along with waiving fees for the building permit. It might be, it's a little financial incentive for people to think about building a garden suite in their backyard or even a suite in their basement. for people to think about building a garden suite in their backyard or even a suite in their basement. So another sort of line of strategies here is, right now, there are not, there are pretty much no service lots available. But what we were proposing to do is get a, hire a consultant to just cost out what it would cost to service certain lots or certain city lands. And that's, that's basically just would be the next step towards, we're not asking any decisions to be made about leasing or subdividing or anything at this point. We just need to figure out what it would cost to service city lands to create smaller lots potentially. And those locations are, there's one, two, five of them, listed on page seven of the report and also on map.
So the critical parts of that, that we're going to waive fees?
Your Worship?
Yes, Councilor Moslin?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I guess, this is really lengthy and really detailed. I had lots of questions about within the different types of housing. Can you have a tiny home without wheels?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's clear. Is an RV a tiny home? Why not?
B C building code requirements need to be met.
Sorry?
B C building code requirements need to be met. It needs to be dwelling, like a regular
So if I put a skirt around an RV?
No.
Okay, I remember, okay. I have a feeling that some RVs cost way more than a tiny home.
No.
Anyways, okay. I guess if somebody was asking my advice as a counselor, that's what I'm supposed to do. Because I think we need to be flexible. Let's keep planning, but I think we need to be a little bit more flexible on how many people are going to get bought out. I'm really apprehensive that this is just another step down the road we haven't decided to go down yet. Anyhow, I guess, so that's it for now, Mayor. Maybe I'll come back
Willing it down. We've got waiving of fees. We've got delegation of authority to get this to happen quicker and easier without complications and education of the public. Those are three kind of critical things that we're moving forward on here. Councilor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my mind is going to a different place than what I heard this morning, you know. Great the scenarios about people being bought out and not bought out and how that might fit in their financial situation and even this garden suites. But we had a housing issue before the flood, period. So all these scenarios should have happened before on how we get more lots on the market. I have concerns about garden suites putting two full-time residents on services that are built for one. Concerns about that, but that's not my issue here today is, as far as the steps requested from council today, I would rather again have that workshop to say, hey, here's a lot. What does council think? Should it be a multifamily, a high-density place? That would then indicate, yes, consultant, you have to supply the services for this amount of people. Is it doable? But go out and say, hey, how much is this going to cost as a service? When we don't know the density that council is willing to put up, I think it's putting the cart before the horse. So I think we're, again, I think we have to have a more of a general discussion on what types of housing we need in the community and what the city can afford. I do have a concern when, when we get into people's business. When I look at all the D F A scenarios about, well, if they were in this situation and that situation, I don't need to know that as a counselor and I don't think I should. I think there was one point in here about asking banks about lease rates and stuff. I think that's not our role. You know, again, I go back to before the flood. We needed to try and get new housing developments on the market of all sorts. And that should be our focus on how we, how we get that done and leave it at that. And ask that fundamental question. Is now the municipality in the land management business? And I, for one, don't necessarily think that we should be. Thank you.
Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, just in reviewing the strategies, you know, they're doable. My only concern is with strategy two. And I don't want the taxpayers to think that council is aggregating their responsibilities by delegating the issuance of development permits to city staff. Not that I don't think that city staff is in game toward doing that. I just think that as a counselor, I want to be at least made aware and involved in the, in the approval process.
Okay, and these three are coming forward to tonight's meeting. So we're talking about them individually. Can you give us some explanation of why it would be beneficial to have that delegation of authority?
Sure. Through the merit, absolutely. So coming before council is, is often a challenge for people and for what's a fairly administrative checklist. So reviewing back to the official community plan, there's development permit area guidelines that were brought in that speak to the placement of the home on the property, the room for access. So basically, they're kind of things that a building inspector or a plan checker would check off. And if a lot is compliant with what is in the zoning bylaw for being able to fit it, council actually doesn't have a say whether or not it gets built there. Council can only say, you know, improve the look of the siding for fitting in with the character of the neighborhood or whatever else. Though the development permit guidelines actually speak to that the home doesn't even have to look exactly the same as the primary one of the property. It can just be essentially no worse. So council has spoken of not being in people's business. This is the case, basically, something similar to a building permit, but where there's additional checks and balances that staff have to make sure that they have the egress, the safety access. Basically, they're very routine matters. It's different than a development permit for a new highway commercial establishment or downtown business with a large neon sign. Because these are not public-facing places. They're maybe a laneway house or something else. So notwithstanding the concerns, to make sure that the servicing for that lot is sufficient to handle two dwellings. Already zoning for most of the municipality actually allows for duplexes and suites. So this is basically another way to accomplish that kind of density once all those technical pieces are done. So basically, the development permit in this case is a very technical thing that could be seen as an impediment to enabling them if council had to review everyone, if it becomes popular. And this is something that's happened in other municipalities where they started with a development permit going through council at first and then they did it to staff. And then, once everyone got comfortable with it, they've actually removed development permits altogether for these types of homes in some municipalities because they become more
More easier. Yeah. Councilor, did that allay your concern?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Councilor Moslin?
One of my understand from reading it is that one of the, something else that might be an impediment is that you have to, for a tiny home, for garden suites, you have to consult the neighbors. I was really scratching my head as to wondering why. Why do you, if it's within the bylaw, I mean, if I paint my house pink, do I have to consult my neighbors? Like, I would see that being a real impediment for somebody who wanted to have a garden suite or a tiny home on their property and be compliant with city bylaws, but still have to go see what the neighbors think about it. And what if the neighbors don't like it? Anyhow, those are my questions.
And addressing that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Actually, that's, I think you picked it up in the brochure. And it's not a requirement to consult the neighbors. It's, I think I, we put it in there just maybe as a suggestion, it might help.
Kind of thing.
Exactly.
You know, so for number four, neighbors are notified. So your neighbors, I mean, that would, that would strictly is a real impediment.
Yep.
It's, that's not a practice for development permit though.
Yeah. So you're identifying that as a potential impediment for people to
That's what we see people about, isn't it?
No, point taken, definitely. It's not a legislative thing or anything and we can
Okay. So maybe the wording could be softened on that to make it
Exactly.
Councilor Thompson?
Just, just a couple of things. And normally, I send the, when I bring the sort of stuff up and I didn't have time. The, on page 11, under the, I want to build a garden suite, what do I need to do? Number three, I think the phone number is wrong.
Oh, yeah. 2266.
Thank you.
This is a draft?
That's the back of it, I think.
Okay, there's
Yeah, this is a draft.
There was a couple of others. There was another place where that was, okay, neighbors are notified. What was my comment there? Okay, if the neighbors are notified, what happens if they object?
And that's where we've suggested that maybe the wording be changed to some extent there to not encourage that kind of expectation that they would be able and could influence a decision there?
Oh, used building products that demonstrate reused upcycling and green technology. Is that mandatory?
It's guidelines.
Guidelines, okay. And there was one other place. Okay. Page 18, clause number nine. Can a tiny house and a tiny house on wheels be on the same property?
I'm just reading that. Technically, yes, because a tiny house on a foundation is just a small house on a foundation. The tiny house on wheels, first of all, they all need a temporary use permit, which is a process. So technically, they could, as long as it's not under 90 years. There's a minimum size for
For the primary
Yes, for the primary dwelling.
Okay, and I think this is the last one. It's on, it's the header on page 16. And again, the phone number is not great.
Okay, Councilor, this matter is coming before us this evening and we'll be looking for motions on all three of these motions that you have in front of you. Do you want to go ahead and move those now to move them or can we just leave them for tonight? Councilor Moslin?
Mayor, there comes forward tonight are, we do it now, in which case, it's item three.
You have to do it again anyway.
It's item three. I, this, with council, it says ways to develop building permit fees for garden secondary suites in the city. I was going to put a timeline for two years, for three years, for whatever.
To limit it.
To limit it and also to encourage it to happen now.
Right. Okay, and that's a suggestion that we could put into a modification for tonight when we face with these motions? That be acceptable? Okay. All right. Have we, have we done this topic? Anything from the gallery?
Have we, have we, council's just
Well, we're not passing them. We're going to pass them tonight. We've reviewed them today and discussed
Okay, but we're, it's sort of saying that we refer them. So I think we should probably, I don't know, unmask it for
We'd likely would be best to just
Move all three?
And move all three and so then it's not a proper process.
Okay, so would you like to move all three, Councilor Thompson? And we'll move them to tonight's meeting?
Yes.
And we don't need a secondor for that? All those in favor? Carrie?
Did you want three separate resolutions?
No, she doesn't. All right. Yes, Trish?
I just, where my brother lives in Ontario, this has come up. Each homeowner does have to make a presentation, but they also put a limit, because a lot of people want to put their parents in the backyard. They also had a time limit on how long that structure could be there. So there is information out there, but I know some are doing it to make extra money, so, but
Well, and I think we're protecting as best we can against any abuse to some of this matter, but certainly encouraging housing at the same time.
Yeah, because they're going through the time limit in there.
Yeah, and the time limit. Councilor Moslin has suggested we modify the motion tonight.
No, but they have a time limit, how long that, that whole
Right.
Structure could be in the yard. There's a time limit. I think it's 20 years, it has to be on.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't know why, but
Yeah, I guess that's something that we could consider as well.
I just wanted to bring it up if someone wanted to do some research on that.
Whether that's necessary or not, we can just question. Okay. And we are moving down to monthly highlight reports from department managers. And I will ask for any kind of comments or questions on the monthly reports. Councilor Moslin?
Yeah, I thank you, Your Worship. First off, a big thank you to Fire Department for their work on that, on the weekend, it's in the minutes. But also, I guess, this came up earlier. Just wanted to know how the rewrite of the zoning bylaw is coming along.
That zoning bylaw is plural, so I imagine there's a lot of issues on the table with zoning bylaws.
Yes, Councilor Zelinski, Councilor Zelinski brought up the idea of definitions prior. And my hope is that once those definitions are approved, are not, that where we put supportive housing, community kitchens, shelters, whatever, staff will make some recommendations as to which zones they would go into. Now, that's a lot of work. We knew it was a lot of work when we asked staff to do it earlier in the spring. So now I'm just asking, how's it coming along?
Graham?
Just briefly speaking broadly to this in context of council's strategic plan development, you know, there's a number of high priority items on there that included some major new looks at the official community plan and zoning bylaw. So staff have been consulted in some of that discussion about capacity. And I believe it's coming back for council in September about how things fit together. So if we're talking about major rewrite, it's a big project. If we're talking about some minor tweaks, they can be done theme-based and you kind of do basic fixes when various bylaw amendments come through. So it is a strategic discussion about when a major rewrite happens and certainly can't happen with current capacity right at this moment.
So it has not been neglected and is currently being worked on? Councilor Thompson?
Thank you, Your Worship. It was my understanding, at least that was my intent, was to have workshops with the planning department to go through the, both bylaws together. And to, you know, rather than somebody's got an issue with, some member of council's got an issue with some portion of the bylaw, let's, let's get it talked about and dealt with in a timely manner so that we don't have to keep coming back potentially for rezonings or amendments to the zoning bylaw to clarify things. So that was my, my hope, anyway.
Councilor Zelinski?
Yes, I guess clarity on what I thought we had done. And I'll probably do this, going back to March, actually, it's March 11th. We passed a motion that staff be directed to amend the zoning bylaw to include definitions for supportive housing and community kitchens and to establish the appropriate zoning and permit for each. And these amendments be brought back to council for consideration no later than September. And the, these amendments be brought back to council for consideration no later than September. So that's, that's a motion that was passed back in March and hopefully that gave staff enough time to actually deal with it. As far as I know, I don't, I haven't heard or I haven't seen a motion passed that changes that. The only thing that I remember is in our strategic planning sessions, we were saying, there's a lot of different things in, in both our OCP and zoning by law. And that during the strategic plan discussions is where we'll decide whether or not we have a full rewrite and the financial and time implications around that. But again, as I mentioned earlier and want to mention again, I'm very disappointed that staff couldn't follow through on a resolution that has not been changed anyplace else. So thank you.
Need for the comment on the reports? Mr. Moslin?
Yeah, okay. Just on the flood recovery report, one bullet. And I know we're going to talk about this more, but where are we with the downtown flood mitigation plans? Which my understanding is they're separate from the DMAF funding. And my understanding is that there's some preliminary engineering was going to go forward on that. And so just, where are we with that?
Mr. Mayor, so the, it's actually, this is underneath the development and engineering cycle. Flood and recovery is basically speaking to year one of all the work and the kind of interim needs, et cetera. All the long-term needs are referred back into kind of normal department operations. So specifically on the project formerly known as the NDMP or National Disaster Mitigation Program, the provincial portion of that funding as well as the federal portion were approved by the province in conjunction with DMAF. So it'll actually be treated as part of the same project. And Dyking that would happen east of the Second Street would be also, you know, be the same contractors and everyone else doing the work as per the rest of downtown projects. So the preliminary work that was initiated was to try to get us, be able to construct this fall within the timelines, within the fish windows and that kind of thing. And the timeline on that project was originally one year because all the funds had to be expanded by March of 2020. It was the end of the federal funding cycle. By including it in DMAF, it can more efficiently be done over, you know, two to three year period. You know, depending on what the engineering and planning recommendations are on there. So the first thing that will be happening will be the hiring of our capital projects manager, you know, capital projects engineer, and then the procurement process for detailed design, engineering permitting for all these projects can proceed. I think the, the idea of having the flood wall and Dyke and other components having it within a one-year timeline was, was a difficult reach. And I think that's why the federal government saw that it couldn't fund it. And he's seeing the need to expend all the funds by the end of next March. So short answer, it's part of the thing that's basically DMAF, but solely provincially funded.
Council, that answers your question.
Uh, part, in part, uh, I guess, so basically originally it was supposed to be, work was going to start this fall. Is that still the case?
Uh, no, there's, there's no possibility of happening this fall. There's a likely permitting process that has to happen.
Councilor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few questions here, but just to finish off a bit of the conversation that I had before. I, I hope staff is aware also that, that committed the whole back in June tenth. We had a proposal in front of us about density in the, in the core commercial area. So there is a motion on books for that to come back in September. So hopefully we'll have those discussions at that time. But onto the manager's report. I've got a couple for the public works manager, I mean. And the first one is airport master plan. We still have people looking for places for hangars. And I was told the airport master plan was going to solve all that. Can you tell me how we are on that?
Can we get a record on the airport master plan?
Yep.
Mr. Reed?
So the, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So the airport master plan is a mining document. So it was my understanding that his sheets was the lead on organizing that. So as to the particulars, I'm not sure if it's gone out yet or not, but that was in her area.
Okay, another question that should be in your area is I recently noticed a new water well at the end of Boundary drilled within the statutory road allowance. Can you tell me about that, when it was drilled, what it's for, and how come we have a predicament where somebody can run right into it and not see it, it's not a sign of oil or anything?
So again, that was through the development engineering department. So we were looking for doing some test wells around the valley. That was one location that we thought may spur on a bit of growth or help with development. So there was one put down Boundary on the east side of the road right away as a test well, but it came back with very little water. So there was one done there. There was one done along Seventy Third, behind Pearlie School, right in the corner of their playing field there. That one also came up with very little water. And then we had one done at Angus McDonald, Paul Park. So that one was done. And it showed the best out of the wells, but it did have some metals that were of concern, so we haven't proceeded with that one.
And as mentioned, I would suggest that especially anything that's in a road allowance or public place be protected correctly. And unfortunately, I'm speaking about past experience that we better get that either buried or, or something, so. And I guess the only other question I have is through, probably through planning, Mr. Mayor, is talk about our capital projects engineer and the hiring process, please.
I'm not sure that that's going to be discussed in public. Are we not going to discuss that in camera?
Well, I know that where are we? Applications have been accepted. Have interviews been done? Is there?
Public information?
There's, there's been two interviews done and, you know, they're looking promising.
Two interviews done, looking promising.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moslin?
Your worship, thank you. Well, manager of operations is here. Want to talk about the Pooh Bridge. Was that bridge damaged in any way in the floods?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a structural assessment done prior to the floods.
Okay.
It was recommended we change some of the boards that were up around there, so we did that. We also changed the piping across there to a flexible piping, but it wasn't damaged during the flood.
That's too bad.
All right, Council, can we have a motion to accept a manager's report? Council? Do they? All those in favor? What do they do at the regional, they say anybody opposed? Okay, and moving. Moving on. We, we are being presented with the first offering of the annual permissive tax exemption. And at this point, my computer's going slow, but comment and discussion on that matter, we're moving this to the September third regular meeting. So there is some time here for discussion and/or. So comments on this matter, Council? How about if we put that motion up to remove it to September the third? Regular meeting?
Yeah.
Councilor Crowe?
The, the.
No secondary.
Permissive on the tax exemption?
Yes, would be on the September third regular meeting.
Oh, yes.
It gives you time to go over that. It's a fairly extensive list. And to be able to bring forward comments. So this is to move it to September the third. All those in favor? Carrie? The next item again is on tonight's meeting, but it has to do with the motel just across the bridge and flood damage and its request for more flexibility in terms of how it makes a living there. Lee, are you reporting on this one?
I am, Mr. Mayor. I just have to find where to put it in my notes here. So I'll make this one fairly brief. Oh, sorry about that. I'll make this one fairly brief. Sorry, it's right on my face. The property owner is asked to rezone this property from highway commercial to tourist commercial, which is consistent with our official community plan. It's, the new zoning, actually, that's the location of it right there. So for reference, that's Riverside Motel. When the flooding happened, I understand that all the buildings closer to the left, closest to the river, were flood affected. The buildings are still not back in operation yet. So the new zoning would allow the property owners to use it as campground as well. It's less, or it's more restrictive than the existing. For example, if you look at it, you no longer would have automobile sales and things like that. And as a campground, you would have the ability similar to what we have over here in our facility that if it gets flooded, it could get back in service fairly quickly rather than having structures that are in the flood plain that need to be rebuilt. So that's part of the calculus from the property owner that I understand. She's on the right here with me. We're also, we're asking as part of this to consider waiving the fee for the application for the rezoning. Part of the request for that is that this would be in line with the, this is in line with the official community plan. If the property owner hadn't gone ahead and asked for this rezoning, the planning department would strongly consider moving forward on this on their own so that we can make it a bit more restrictive and go towards redeveloping the site that it would be more flood resistant. And so that's part of the calculus. They're asking for that. I spoke to the fact that the existing, most of the existing buildings are within that thirty meter flood protection area. It is within, there are two development permit areas on this property. There's the environmental development permit area because of that riparian zone. And as well, there is the commercial development permit area on that property. There is a minor tweak to the bylaw. It's probably not a good word to use, but a tweak in the bylaw. We have currently a definition for an inn, which in all respects is essentially a small hotel. But we haven't used it anywhere in the bylaw. So I've looked around at a number of other bylaw in other communities and they tend not to have inn in their bylaws. I think this is probably just a leftover from other things. So we're suggesting to remove that from the bylaw, that definition, at the same time that we do this rezoning. So we're, we're asking for Council to go forward with the process, or direct staff to go forward with the legislative process for doing this.
Right, Council, so this is coming tonight for, for three readings. How do you feel about the approximately, I guess, a thousand dollars in rezoning application fee being waived here, Councilor Zelinski?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm struggling here. I'm looking for some, some help from my colleagues as far as criteria on when we will waive cost charges or development fees. We're getting a request for different reasons and I'm just struggling in my mind what the, what legitimate reasons should be for waiving application fees for any rezoning or development cost charges of some sort, so. As the day goes by, any help from individuals? I appreciate it, thanks.
Any clarification on that for the waiving of fees? Councilor Thompson, did you want to speak first?
Yes, if I could.
Yes.
Yeah. My only comment is, is that in this particular instance, I don't have an issue with waiving the rezoning application fee. The businesses on the east side of the Kettle River have received no help whatsoever. And this to me is inviting the owners of the property to redevelop into a service that is going to benefit the, the community as a whole at large. So I personally would support the waiving of this, this fee in this particular instance.
What was your comment, Councils? Corlitt?
I appreciate what you're saying, Councilor Zelinski, but I think the line should be drawn about where we're going to waive and not waive. But in this particular case, I agree. They've had no financial assistance from anyone. And to make it a viable use of that land, I think it's a good idea. And I, I do support removing that.
Councilor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So helping people that were flood affected to get back to normal is great. Then a question, the, the request for garden suites that have been there for years and people have the opportunity to build them and whatnot, and the request to waive those fees for whatever reason, that's, thank you.
That was meant for incentives in the other case. And so this is a different matter in terms of flood affected versus attempting to give some incentives to.
And the other is not a hardship. To me, this, this is a hardship.
Yeah. Okay, Council, this will be in front of us for first, second, and first and second readings, but we need to go ahead and instruct staff. So I see all three of those motions and one motion to go forward. Councilor Thompson, no secondary required. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry? Okay, we are down to Erin Allen. Is she still around?
I'm sorry.
Long day. I'm sorry, but you were last on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Ah, thanks, and Council. I have a slide presentation.
Just bringing it up, so just give me a moment. So while we're waiting, the street party was great.
It was amazing.
And the dance band.
Dance, trauma? Yeah, they did great. You know how to rock it.
Sweat down, sweat without damage, you center your back now or not. Microsoft, thank you for supporting our crashing. It's honest, it's crashing.
Is it Microsoft that's developed that new software for people that are blind? That they can have like a GPS?
Oh, I thought you meant for, for, they developed that for people that are blind who don't really care if their computer runs or not. No, I, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, it's actually pretty cool.
When are you talking casually with each other?
That's what I do.
The previous, I'm sorry.
Oh, you need to download the updated version of something to get something and then phone bill dates.
I have to apologize. Today I have a dental crisis going on, so that's why I'm getting a little lost at times.
Do you want me to plug in?
Yeah. The way, the way it opened, it might be. The way it opened, it might be more efficient if I just did dancing for you, so.
Okay. Then, my name is Erin Allen. I'm the events manager for the city of Grand Forks and today is just to go over the few things that has happened and what I am in the works of putting together to have happen in the next few months. So Canada Day was incredible. Coming to the city, not knowing what to expect for Canada Day was a little nerve-wracking, but the community came together and I, I've heard amazing things on social media as well as in person. I get stopped regularly, which is, which is nice, but sometimes I'm a little busy running to do things, but I always try to make time to, to chat with the community members. So we had several entertainers from the community come out and perform all day, extended into the evening, which I was a little hesitant on, was excited to see where it would go and we had about 45 people come until 11:30 at night, so to me, that was winning. So the next one was Party in the Street, or sorry, the stats that we had for Canada Day, we had 25 registered floats this year. I had everybody fill out a form so that I had contact information for next year. It'll make it a little bit easier. We had 25 registered Market Vendors, food trucks and food booths combined. The kids zone was huge and the success of it was due to Savon Foods and Flip, Pump and Gymnastics. They took it over from me and just ran with it, which was amazing. Rotary Club and the Elks were out in full support again. I hear that this is something they do on the regular, so it was very nice to see how they set up and what they do when they come out to the community events. River Valley Community Church donated their bouncy houses, so they, the kids were in there constantly. And so like I said, we had about 40 people, 45 people attend the evening, which, which I hear doesn't happen often to get people out of their homes after 6:00, so it was good. So the next one was Party in the Street. It was on July 20th, down on Market Avenue. It was an incredible day to see all the community come. I was told that I needed to expand the date from what had happened last year. So it was a fundraiser for flood recovery last year and this year it was going to be just a community event. So my goal was to show the community and visitors to Grand Forks how the downtown will look when all the stores are back up and working, when all of the construction material is down and the storefronts are filled right up from each street. So in order to do that, we had over 30 businesses line the streets on Market Avenue. That was brick and mortars already set up and then Market Vendors, food trucks and the restaurants down on Market Avenue. This year we extended it. It was 5:00 to 10:00 last year and this year it was 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I encouraged the restaurants on Market Avenue to do some specials specifically for that date and try and keep it under the $10 mark. This, what I encouraged them and most of them did take part in it. And we had a couple fundraisers, the barbecue that the Steel Workers Union did, as well as the 50/50 and our guitar giveaway. They raised about $25,000 for the Davis Building mural, so that was pretty exciting. The street was filled right from start to finish. It was, they, they came in droves. It was, it was amazing to see and I stepped back at the very end of each section of the streets and just watched and there was people all the time. It was very humbling and the businesses have reported that it was a very great day, profitable and they're all excited for next year. So my next endeavor is I am bringing Grand Forks Dinner Theater to our community. I've partnered with the Gallery 2, the Boundary Musical and Theaters Society, Wooden Spoon, PB Ranch, City of Grand Forks Downtown Business Association and the Chamber of Commerce to put this together. It is going to be four shows, so over two weekends. Because we are limited in space in some of our venues, it'll also be more intimate for the, to guests to go. It is Tony and Tina's wedding, so you are going to a wedding from start to finish. We're doing ceremony to reception to dance. It, it should be pretty fun. So that's September 28th and 29th and October 5th and, no, yeah, 5th and 6th, sorry. The next one is the first annual weddings in Boundary Countries. So my background is in the wedding industry. It is my niche, so when I hear or talk to community members in the Boundary area and the struggles that they have to find the businesses that will cater to their events, weddings, grads, and find out that they're very hard to find, is that it just makes me excited and wants, puts this together. So again, I've partnered up with Gallery 2. November 30th is when I hope to do this. The gallery is empty with exhibitions at that time and decorated beautifully for Christmas, so why not bring people in so they know where the gallery is for when they do have their next exhibition, but also to showcase that you can do dinners there, you can do reunions, you can have parties there. You just, you just have to know what venues are willing to do it. I'm in talks with the Gem Theater at the moment to do the fashion show there in the evening. It has not been squared away yet, but I'm hoping to, because then it'll bring people down to the Market Avenue, see another place where events can happen. Also, I'm including Work and Play and Avalon to showcase their wares as well. So I'm trying to include as many businesses, small or large, into pretty much everything that I plan to do for the community. Then we get to Christmas and I have been asked to take on the Christmas parade and the Christmas tree light-up. So I know as of right now, it is the Friday, first Friday in December, which is the 6th, I thought. I could be wrong. So it's the first Friday in December. They, I have been in talks with the Grand Forks Coral Society, which I've heard that they do, do a whole lot of in-public shows. They do do a lot at the Silver Kettle and things like that. So I'm kind of getting them out of their box. They did do Oh Canada for us on Canada Day. So that's exciting to have them more involved in the community and I'm working on sponsorships and partnerships to get the rest of the details put together. And, yes?
December 7th is a Saturday?
So December 6th.
So that's the Friday.
The Friday. I've heard that it, the parade happens on a Friday, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
December.
My, my dates have been wrong for the past couple days. I apologize. So yes, the first Friday of December is what I've been told is when the parade and light-up usually happens. My last event for the season, or for this year, that I have started working on is the Festival of Trees and Christmas Extravaganza. Again, I am partnering up with the gala, or the gallery, because they are, they're open, but they don't have exhibits, so we have free range of the building. The biggest part is that I'm trying to put together is the Festival of Trees, which is businesses I'm hoping, or families can purchase a tree and decorate it. And then I am wanting to put together an auction in the evening of December 14th to auction off these trees. And what I hope to do is give the proceeds to the, from the auction to the community Christmas dinner and also the Christmas hampers that the fire department does in Grand Forks and Christina Lake. There is a whole lot more information about this date that I'm not quite there yet to give specifics, but it is on December 14th. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good work, Erin. Okay, counsel.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Erin. Shall we adjourn?
Do we adjourn?
We do have questions from the public, so. Are there any further questions from the gallery? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn.